Good evening, I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, April 1st, 2019. And previously, we were in executive session to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair sort of clears. And we took no -- Managers Union Contract, excuse me, SEIU, we took no action. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, anyone for weekly briefing?
Good evening, I'm Ginny Hewitt from Brooksbury Library. First of all, I'd like to thank Finance Director Carol Coppola, who gave an excellent presentation last week on municipal finance 101 to a roomful of very interested community members. She gave a great overview of all the complexities of municipal finance and everyone was really engaged, there were lots of questions, and we very much appreciated Carol sharing her expertise and also her ability to explain municipal finance in plain, everyday English that we could understand. This was a joint program with the library and Vota Information, and we hope to do more of this in the future. It was recorded for Channel 18, has been playing now, and it's available on their YouTube channel. The second thing I wanted to mention was, we have a new, a rescheduled date for the generator installation at the library. It will be Monday, April 8th. So we'll be without power for the day, so the library will be closed, but we should be back open for business on Tuesday, April 9th. And just wanted to mention a couple of programs we have coming up. Next Sunday, April 7th, the Friends of the Brooksbury Library are holding Crabgrass Concert, and that is free and starts at 2:00. On Thursday, April 11th, at 4:00, we have a Secrets of Smartphone Photography and Video with Cape Cod Media Center. That program's free, but it requires advanced registration. And on Saturday, April 13th, at 2:00 PM, we have another concert, Julie and Denia's Irish Music. I don't know if I said it's at 2:00, also free. April vacations coming up in a couple of weeks, we have a number of programs planned. There's a Stuff Your Own Animal program, kind of like the Build-A-Bear program, something with strawberry shortcake, and there's a -- I'm like, what's the age cutoff before you can't register for these? But anyway, and a stuffed animal sleepover. We have a few things coming up for our week two, but that's at the end of the month, so we won't go into that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginny. Excuse me, anybody else for weekly briefing? Hi, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie Goodwin, Channel 18. We've recently started some information gathering for upcoming Comcast cable negotiations. So today, we launched a 10-question survey on the website, and as of 6:00 PM this evening, we already had 90 responses. So if you are Harwich resident and you would like to give a little bit of feedback, you can find that survey on the town website homepage, Channel 18 Facebook, the Cultural Center Facebook, the Community Center Facebook, and the Emergency Management Facebook. I'm also accepting any sort of letters of support, and you can bring those to the Community Center, to me. A side note, last week, the board approved $7,170 for the purchase of new furniture at the Community Center. WB Mason came back to me and said that they had a new vendor that they're working with, and sent me a second quote, which was significantly cheaper at $3,254, with a savings of $3,915. So, that's coming in lower.
That's great news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Hi, Link.
Hey, Link Hooper, DPW Director. I have some fantastic news. The gas moratorium that's been in place for four years is lifted today, and it's not an April Fool's joke.[291.33][291.33](Laughter). So if you need natural gas to your house, get in line, they have quite a line. They are 90% done digging in Harwich. We had nine and a half miles of the main replacement program in Harwich. Most of the critical routes are done, thus they were able to lift the moratorium. The only place they have left to work is Depot and North Harwich, past the Main Street intersection heading north to connect up to Slough Road. That's it. Everything else has been done. We've had a lot of pains, there hasn't been a week that's gone by that my phone has not rung with a happy resident that's been sitting in traffic. And believe me, getting to and from the DPW or the disposal area at all the last couple of months has been challenging. The nine and a half miles will, in probably a year and a half, receive curb-to-curb overlays. That means we get all brandy-new roads. The roads you see now are not the finished product. I think next week or the week after, a lot of Queen Anne Road that just have trench patch is going to be milled and filled to get a ride-quality patch down, like we had on most of the sections. So it won't be like you're driving in some of the other towns where you're riding on a trench patch, and it's horrible quality. In the next couple of weeks, we should be more or less significantly done, except for Depot and North Harwich. We do have to put some drainage in Depot and South Harwich before they pave. The reason we're going out a year and a half is to allow for settlement, allow any customers that happen to be on that route of the main replacement to get hooked up to gas before we go and pave, because we'd put a five-year moratorium on any road cuts after that. But I thought that people would like to hear that.
Great news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Link. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comments and announcements? Hearing nobody, we'll move to the consent agenda, and we're going to hold off on the minutes.
Yep. Madam Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move approval of the items thereon, including Item B, approve the appointment of Dorothy Cunningham Bassett as an Assistant Register to help with voter registrations and elections. C, accept the resignation of Chris Harlow as a member of the Capitol Outlay Committee effective May 10th, 2019. D, approve the appointment of William Stoltz as a full member of the Planning Board with a term to expire on June 30th, 2021. Approve E, approve application for a one-day entertainment license with special permit for relief from the Town Noise Bar Law, Section G, for an event to be held on June 30th, 2018, by the Kukunis family. F, approve annual common fiddler license renewal for 10 yen. G, approve the application by Ragnar Events LLC to hold a running relay on May 11th, 2019. H, approve the recommendation of town administrator regarding the petition by Verizon, New England, and Eversource Energy to renumber one jointly-owned pole and place one newly jointly-owned pole on Main Street Extension to provide service for new development on Denwich Road. And I approve the recommendation of town administrator regarding a petition by Verizon, New England, and Eversource Energy to relocate 14 poles on Lower County Road to accommodate sidewalk wine-dining.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Michael?
Chris, on I, the removing, moving the 14 poles on Lower County, that's not tied to the project passing at town meeting? That's independent of it?
It is kind of tied. Obviously, we're moving the poles so we can widen the sidewalk. But I think if the work was to be done, it's just going to make the sidewalk network that much better.
So if it fails at town meeting, it's not going to, we're not going to be online?
It wouldn't have a negative impact.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, so moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Madam Chair, I notice on the agenda, there's nothing on the agenda pertaining to the plastic bottle ban, but I do see some young people in the audience. I'm not sure if they came to speak, but because it's not on the agenda, the public comment and announcement time would be to do it.
Oh, true.
So if we could rewind if they want to speak.
But if you want to speak on the public --
Do you think --
No, no, no problem.
Thank you for pointing that out. And then if you just, when you're speaking at the podium, just say your name. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Declan Russell.
I'm Alexa Long.
And I'm Courtney Derry. We would like to speak about the Citizens' Petition Article to Ban Plastic Straws. We're not aware that it was on the agenda for March 18th, and would like to present it to you now.
We are eighth graders at Montemoy Regional High School. We are a part of Project Citizen in Mr. Dixon's and Mr. Matheson's civics class. Project Citizen is where each of our classes chooses an issue we want to address and hope to discover a solution in our community. Our class has chosen ocean pollution as our big issue, so tonight we decided to propose a plastic straw ban in the town of Harwich. Plastic straws and other products are often seen strewn on our town's beaches and recreational areas.
Debris often ends up on our beaches and then in the ocean, where some of it gets eaten by marine animals that mistake it for food. The majority of pollutants going into the ocean are plastics, and a big contributor to that ever-growing pollution in our oceans is plastic straws. For too long, we have used these plastic straws and polluted our environment. It is possible to stop the use of plastic straws, though. Already, for example, the Entertainment Cinema in Dennis has given up plastic straws and turned to paper. Paper straws work just as well and don't harm the environment nearly as much.
Decreasing the amount of towns that are selling plastic products decreases the amount of waste produced. Seeing to this, Provincetown has already passed this proposal, and many other towns are considering it, such as Sandwich, Born, and Mashpee. Our neighboring town, Chatham, had to board the selectmen meeting to review our proposal and is now moving it on to town meeting. We hope our proposal for a plastic straw ban has made an impact in the town's decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, and all the hard work you guys do at school, and reminding us adults who, you know, sometimes have a hard time with change, it's nice to hear young voices reminding us of why it's so important. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any of, you don't want to ask questions, do you? Okay. Okay, so we will move on to public presentations. Presentation Experimental Kelp Farm Expansion, Mark Kelleher. Mark here.
I'm the operator of Kelleher Farms. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you, and thank you for all the time you give to the town. I'm here tonight because last year, I received approval from the Harbor Master and the Conservation Commission to have an experimental kelp array off of Herring River. I'd like to expand that to 2.5 acres. It's still experimental, and the reason I'm before you tonight is because, you know, I'm seeking your permission, and as John Rendon suggested to me, I need to start with you, because it's a whole process to attain the approvals. Even though I received approvals last year, I need to go back and receive approvals again from a multiple of agencies. I'm also looking for the town's support to publish aquaculture regulations. That would help reduce the permitting time. If the town has aquaculture regulations, somebody like myself or anybody else wouldn't have as long a process to get permitted. I'd also like to see aquaculture regulations, because it would give the opportunity for what I'm proposing to use, to have aquaculture as well. I'm working with some people from Wellfleet and from ARC privately, that believe that you could also grow with the superstructure that I have with the kelp, you could grow oysters and clams. So for those two reasons, I'm here tonight. Just a little bit of history. I, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, but I received permission for three arrays last year. I have one array out off of Herring River right now. I'm permitted by the Division of Marine Fisheries, Army Corps of Engineers, the Mass DEP. I was reviewed by the Harbor Master, Waterways Commission, Conservation Commission, Indian and Tribal Artifacts Commissions. There's a long regulatory process to go through, and that's why I think the aquaculture regulations would be important. What I'm looking for for next year is 2.5 acres, and that would give me the opportunity over time incrementally to build up to eight to 10 lines of 500 feet. Other fisheries that use the area where I'm at, I'm about a mile off of Herring River, are conch fisheries and whale fisheries. I've spoken to Ernie Eldridge. There's no interference with my present installation, and the proposed installation will be in the same exact area. I've also spoke to several of the conch fishermen, and I've designed the farm to be long and rectangular, so I wouldn't interfere with their outlays. In your packet, and I apologize to the audience, I don't have this for you to see, but in your packet, I have a sample kelp line layout. And quite, what it is, it's 500 feet long with two anchors and a buoy at either end, and a center anchor, 500-foot line that's seven feet below the surface, and it has every 50 feet buoys to keep the intermediate line at seven feet afloat. It doesn't go in until, the anchors go in October through November. The actual horizontal line, which is again, seven feet below the surface, so it's, shouldn't be a navigational hazard, especially during the time of year when I would install it. The horizontal line goes in in November, and the actual kelp is installed in November as well. So the deployment dates are October 1st to November 15th. For this upcoming year, the two and a half acres, up to four 500-foot lines would be installed. I plan on two, but if things work out well, if the sales go well this year, that maybe we could go up to four. There's a series of different anchoring systems I would use. I'm looking at concrete anchors, which I've used before, and I will show you some examples of that again on the, well, we can actually go through it. I'll explain, this is the actual horizontal line at seven feet below the surface. That picture was taken about two or three weeks ago. Hopefully, by May, when the kelp would be removed, it should be five or six feet long. There's a big growth. That is, that's an example of the installation that is out off of Herring River right now. You can't see it from shore. You can see the radar arrays, but it's basically that line that's seven feet below the surface. You have an end buoy, and that yellow buoy is an intermediate buoy to keep the line at seven feet. I just mentioned the anchors, the anchors are concrete anchors that sit on the bottom with chain. This year, I'm looking at maybe trying some different things, and I'm going to work with John Rendon on that after approval. This is type of, I use local people to help with the installation. This is Crossrip Construction, he helped me with the installation of the anchors this past summer. Just for education's sake, that is an example of the seed kelp. I received that from Woodtoole Oceanographic or Green Wave in Connecticut. I received that this year in December, and that is unspooled onto the main seven-foot line. I go out and check the lines every two weeks. That's a condition of the permit. That I think is in December. That's the early, some of the early growth. That fellow there with the beard is Paul Wittenstein. He works for ARC, and he seems to believe we could work some shellfish into the same type of structures. Nutritional value of kelp, I know we have a big crowd here, but I brought you some examples of what is out there. This is an example of what a two and a half acre farm, when it's built out, would look like. And again, this is out, mainly is out there in the ocean in, from November until mid-May, I'm required by permit to have the horizontal lines out, so. And that's it in terms of, of photos, and that's basically it. So it's 2.5 acres, it's 680 feet by 280 feet, and I'd like to get your approval, and your approval is merely the first step. After you, I go to John Rendon, I go to the Conservation Commission, and then I start to work my way up. And I've done this last year, and that's why the aquaculture regulations would be very helpful, because if I had a need to expand again, I could just merely go before the board here and John Rendon, and just basically keep it local here. So if you have any questions, I'll be free to answer any, and thank you, really, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Larry?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Can you clarify for me the, just the timing of things, because I think you got a permit from, your present permit is for three lines, less than a tenth of an acre?
Yes.
For three years?
Yes.
And your cover letter, I think, says you want to go to five acres, but the other document says two and a half acres.
Thank you. I did clarify that. I think, I did originally come in with five acres. I think for myself, although just recently, I've, some other people are going to work with me, I think 2.5 acres is reasonable for me for at least the next year or two. If it expands before that, I can come in front of the board. I think five acres now is too much for me, so I am seeking approval for just 2.5 acres.
With the permit you have now, I think the intent was to give you a couple of years to, for everyone to look and see what happened. Does that still make sense to hold off for another, you'll have this spring, one year, to hold off another year, you get two years of information, both on how, what's happening with your growth, and also with, I see, John Mondo, but just to verify there's no navigational problems?
I think, like, for this upcoming year, if I was to put 200, two 500-foot lines in, I would basically only have three more buoys in than what I have right now. And it would give me more data and, and more yield to actually justify some of the expenses and some of the labor that I've put in.
Okay.
And one other thing I'd like to mention as well, down in Chatham, they have, already have approved a 40-acre installation, so I just think the 2.5 acre, and again, the actual installation would be only two lines of this year, that's what I think I would put in, would be two lines, 500 feet. That would give the opportunity to really test some anchors out, to test, just to really get some more experience doing it, and I, you know, again, I'll work with John, but since it's in in the wintertime, for the most part, it shouldn't be a navigational hazard. I'm out there every two weeks, I've not seen, except for one little overlying period in December, when the conch fishermen are basically clearing up their gear, I haven't seen any conflicts at all.
Can I ask another question? Regarding the aquaculture regulations, I'm unfamiliar with the process on that. Is it, do we do it locally, then it goes to, say, Division of Marine Fisheries, or how's that, what's the process?
I think, and Heinz Prof would know better. Heinz has got examples of all the local towns who have shellfish regulations. Now, most of them who have them are on the north side, because they have inactive oyster, shellfish regulations. But I think, once he put those, once he did put those regulations together, I would imagine, and I'm not sure, he would have to at least run that by the DMF. But after that point, once he had those regulations in, and I've had this feedback from the DMF, is it's so much easier for them, if there are shellfish regulations, for example, on this permit I'm going through now, I have to go through the whole public hearing process again. It's just a very rigorous process.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify what you said, we have some initial, because it's within the three-mile limit, but you have a lot of other regulatory hurdles you have to, you go through and to make this.
I have to go to the --
To complete this, to move ahead.
Right. I have to, almost like last year, it starts off locally. I go to Division of Marine Fisheries, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the DEP. So it's, it's quite a process. It took me a whole year to get just the three lines that I did.
I appreciate your effort on that.
Okay.
That's all, yeah.
Thank you, Larry. Michael?
Great presentation, Mark.
Thank you.
I just had a question for John, if I may.
Sure.
Any problem with this, John? I support it.
That's my influence, yeah.
Good evening, John Rendon, Harbor Master. You know, we authorize an experimental proposal that we're excited about. Both, and I say "we," meaning myself and Heinz Prof, who's the Natural Resource Director, have worked with Mark, and again, like Larry said, it was proposed as a small experimental three-year project that, you know, from my perspective as a Harbor Master, I issued a 10A permit to put Moins in the water to hold his, his array lines, and from Heinz's perspective, you know, he's the one really that would develop these regulations from a natural resources perspective, working with the state. And, you know, I think we were a bit surprised that Mark came forward so early, you know, one season, and now he wants to expand, and, and so our advice to Mark was, hey, you know, we need to, we need to really, I think, slow down a bit. We suggested that he come before you to discuss what his plans are and what his desire is, but, because regulations, I think, have to be developed before we get too far down the road. If it's something that the board supports, Heinz Prof is on vacation, otherwise he would be here tonight, but I know he would, would then, you know, start developing those regulations and working with the state to make sure we are in a position, not only for Mark, but everybody else who may come behind him. From my perspective as a Harbor Master, I do have some concern. If we expand and we have more lines in the water, I think it can become a navigational issue. Where his experimental lines are right off the Herring River, during the summer, it's, it's busy, very busy. And the timing of it, I think, works in his benefit, because it is mostly in the water. But, you know, my direction to him during this initial experimental phase was, as soon as May, whatever, 15th comes, all those lines got to come out of the water. Not just the horizontal lines, but the vertical lines, and, because I think it can become a navigational issue. So those are some of my thoughts. I'm excited for Mark, and I think it's, again, in general, we support it, and I'll speak for Heinz, because I have talked to him about it, but I just want, don't want to go too fast.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Go ahead, Michael.
So, you know, with that, obviously, we're going to defer to the Harbor Master, because it is a navigational thing, but, you know, I certainly recognize, Mark, why you want to expand. It's obviously working. Chatham did permit 40 acres. I know you now have competitors in Chatham, and I imagine other towns are going to be working on this, so two and a half versus what you've got, and the layout seems to me like it will work, but, and if you have John's blessing, you certainly would have mine.
Thank you. Ed, anything? Don? I'm sorry.
With the rest of the board, I'm in favor of it.
Good project. Thanks, Mark.
Okay.
I had one question. You mentioned in terms of a different type of concrete anchor, so you showed a picture of one of them. What would the alternative be, and would it stick up higher?
The concrete, the other alternatives were, would be an actual screw anchor into the seabed. That would be more of a permanent-type thing. I think I'd probably want to have a little bit more of a trying-out period before I actually would install that. They're difficult to get in. The other alternative I have is a steel anchor. There are mushroom anchors you could use. I have a source, I have some, I have actually a train wheel from the MBTA, which is a low profile wheel. It's solid steel. So those are some of the alternatives that I would look at, so.
And then if you were going to do shellfishing, which you mentioned you need permitting, they would hang off of the kelp lines?
They would either hang off the existing lines, or they would run along the bottom as, like, almost like a traw line, like a lobster line, but in that same, on the same lines there, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Michael?
No, I said, absent any comment from the public, I would make a motion.
Anybody from the public would like to comment?
I just want to thank --
You have to go up to the podium. Thank you.
Couldn't you just go to Chatham and copy their regulations, or ask them what they did?
We would need Heinz's input on any regulations that are drafted.
Yeah, just to save money and time.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that Heinz would speak with Conservation over there and their National Resource Director, so Bob Duncanson, so.
If I could just adjust that, Heinz has started that process, just so you know. I mean, there are out, like, I think Mark mentioned, other towns have them, so he wouldn't be reinventing the wheel, and he has, you know, some initial regulations put together, but if this is -- if this is gonna go as fast as it seems like it could be, we're not there yet from a regulation standpoint.
John, is, is that the only area that it makes sense i- in the Herring River, or is there other areas? Just curious.
I, I think, I'll probably let Mark answer that from, you know, I, I think he's looking at water quality there, and nutrients and everything else, and obviously off the Herring River, it has that, I, I don't know if you've looked at any other areas, I'm not the right person to ask.
Okay, sorry, John, yeah.
Um, I live right near the Herring River, so I wanna get, be close to home, I can see it with binoculars from my house. I mean, Howardshire has 5,500 acres under its control, three miles out, it could be anywhere out in Dan Tacketown, I, my, I don't feel comfortable going out too far, I'm a mile out now, but it could be anywhere, other than there's an underground electric line, and, uh, as long as you're away from eelgrass, and you have 15 to 20 feet water, it could be anyplace.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Michael, did you?
Well, before, Michael, before you make your, let me ask that, I'd like to include in the motion some language that, uh, regulations are developed concurrently to this, uh, expansion.
I was gonna do it separately, but.
Whichever, just so we look at it.
So I move that we approve the experimental kelp farm expansion as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Or do you have another comment?
Don.
You're gonna do the second part.
I just wanna get that part in as well.
Right, so.
Because the expansions, I've only modified, just, last of two and a half acres, so it's two more lines.
Okay.
Not five.
I did, yeah, as presented, and the correction was made, two and a half.
For two and a half acres, right, so, moved and seconded, no further discussion? All in favor? Bye.
As far as the rules go, Chris, John's already said Heinz is working on it, I'm not sure that takes a motion from the board, if Larry's comfortable, I'm, he's already working on it, so. We'll, we'll put together a staff team and, you know, design something out, and come back with a recommendation. At this point, I'm not sure which-
I'm comfortable with that, we have a schedule that goes along with it.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
John's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Good.
So, we don't need any further action?
No. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you, John. Moving to new business, uh, the Safe Roots to School Support Letter, Chris, do you wanna just give it over to you?
Yeah, just on this, Madam Chair, I, I did get a chance to look in, uh, they had a letter from Montemoy Regional School, uh, this is on the, uh, improving the sidewalk network around the Harwich Elementary School, uh, improving the, the sidewalks themselves, uh, putting in, uh, different curb cuts and so on, uh, they wanted a support letter, and they accepted the one the board already voted previously, uh, they accepted Montemoy, and this is just kind of an acknowledgement that they want it, went on to the administrator, so I, I modified the, uh, the one from the board and, and will send that out. And just as a reminder to folks, uh, that they, we have made it through, if you would, round one of that grant, and they're looking at narrowing in on us for round two, which is a, a positive sign.
Do we have a time frame, um, when they'll make that decision?
I don't, but I, I can look in and see.
Okay, thank you. Don, did it?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll say what I said the first time, because it's still a concern. We have kind of a history in this town of, of traveling down a road until we're so far down the road that we can't find our way back. I just would like to know what point we can critically look at the actual look of the sidewalks, because I'm not sure that we can do everything that they're asking, the widening of sidewalks, multimodal, all that, so, all I wanna know is when the appropriate time is to have that discussion, I really don't wanna have that discussion after they come in with a check.
With the check, yeah, I'm with you. And you did ask, I, I realize you didn't get it in the package, was the grant application, so we'll, we'll get that back in there, I, my apologies for not getting that in.
Thank you, any other comments? Nothing more? Okay. Um, so, you don't need a motion on that, do you?
No, it's just an acknowledgement. Thank you.
Uh, old business, uh, Robert Freitas, Hawksness Road, Ron Cove Road.
Still have a little. Actually, under new business.
Oh, sorry, I skipped a link.
Road maintenance.
Low County Road impact on the roadway program.
Trying to get done early again, huh?
Trying to skip your link.
I was good with that, Madam Chair.
I bet you were, I was trying to help.
Hey, um, usually I'm really quick and to the point, I'd like to take a few minutes and just back up and just describe in three minutes why we're here with Lower County Road, why this is a standalone project. We were, um, doing tip projects, transportation improvement projects in town, with some really good success, we did a bike path, we did an intersection, Route 137. Route 124, um, we ran into some, a butter objection, and we ultimately lost a $4 million project. For that project, I did not need, or the town did not need, private property to build the footprint, because we had some design exceptions. The next road that I had in mind was Lower County Road. That was the next road that we were headed, uh, under this transportation improvement program. Now, when you use these, these grant funds, that requires the town to build a certain footprint, which, um, they call complete streets, which is sidewalks on both sides of the road, and five-foot bike lanes on both sides of the road, which consumes a 40-foot, 43-foot right-of-way. Lower County Road, we have a 40-foot right-of-way, to, to meet their state's requirements, would have required private property taking. So after we lost the 124 project, I came to the board and recommended Lower County Road as a standalone project. I did that because it didn't meet the grant requirements, it's too large of a project with the continuous sidewalk and 2.25 miles, uh, to be incorporated into our normal, ongoing road maintenance program, and there's some complexities out there that need some special expertise. This is the bid. It's, it's been worked on for about two years now. We've had actually 19 companies take out the, the bid package, and we have a bid opening, I believe, on the 16th, um, April 16th, yes, so, two weeks, a little over two weeks, we'll have, we'll know the number. Back in December, I gave the board a briefing on Lower County Road, Mr. Akableum, who's assembled this bid, was here, and we were answering some of the questions the board had. At that time, some members expressed, uh, some concerns of the project value. Subsequently, I wrote a memo to Mr. Clark, um, stating that I felt the project was gonna come in significantly lower than the methodology that Mr. Akableum came to, um, and that is vetted in a very similar project, the town of Brewster did, uh, on Snow Road and Underpass Road, uh, very similar sidewalk on one side of the road, continuous sidewalks, new drainage, reconstruction. Um, and I, we've, I still feel that the number's probably gonna be total in about 4.5 million. Mr. Clark asked me, with some of the sentiments of board members, um, how we could address the, the cost of it and lower the impact to the abutters. So I said, why don't we possibly offer up a million dollars out of our road maintenance funds to do that? Um, and I believe I was asked tonight to talk about what the impact of that might, might Currently, um, so since January, uh, we have pretty much shut down any road maintenance, um, that we're doing. It's all planned and in place, but absent the emergency culvert repair we had to do on Great Western, Western Road two weeks ago, and, um, Main Street Extension, which is actually blowing up on us, uh, other than that, we've shut everything down, until we see what these bids come out with and what the outcome of, of this project's gonna be. Because I believe this road is the priority for the department, it should be priority for the town. I provided you with the, a summary of the five-year road maintenance plan, I believe you have it in your packets. The major impact of a million-dollar project is easy to find, is Great Western Road, and the piece of, uh, Main Street that people always think is Great Western Road. That's a million dollars, a million-dollar project, um, that we could simply slide back to another year to address that. Quite frankly, uh, Lower County Road is in dire need, it was supposed to be up last year, we were ready to go last year, um, the board didn't want it up against the wastewater project and some others. They, that gave, that was actually a pretty decent move, it gave the water department time to do a million-two worth of water main replacement down there, but if you've driven the road now, it is in dire need of some help. The road maintenance plan, the numbers you see there are all anticipated cash flows that we would get out of Chapter 90, where we get just shy of $700,000 a year, and we have been, uh, successful in getting, um, $700,000 in local money with the support of the Finance Committee that bought a Sleckman and the voters. And quite frankly, our roads are in, in really good condition compared to some of our neighbors around town, uh, I mean, in other communities. Uh, I think we've been pretty aggressive for the last 10 years at it, and if we need to take a little hiatus, I don't see a major impact. If you take a long hiatus and try to fund this entirely with the 1-4 we get each year, have been getting, um, then you put yourself behind the eight ball, the life cycle of a road is that we try to avoid reconstructions. Lower County Road is a complete reconstruction. Since I've been director for 16 years, I believe only one road have we actually done a reconstruction to, that, that's correct. So if you get to the roads before you get to that, you save money in the long run. So, a blip in the road, sliding some projects back, I, I absolutely have no issue with whatsoever, um, but Lower County Road is our priority.
Thank you, Link. Questions from the board? Ed?
Um, just to comment in your, as you were talking, you, you, uh, mentioned wanting to reduce the impact on the abutters, um, and you were talking about the cost of the program. This is, this is actually a town-wide proj, project which will be, uh, funded by the taxpayers, uh, property taxpayers, not, not simply the abutters in the area.
I must have misspoke, I meant the taxpayers of Howard.
I, I know you know the difference, I just wanted to make sure somebody out in TV land who heard it, didn't get concerned that it was only going to be the abutters paying for the project.
That's a good point, no veterans will be assessed to the.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only comment I'm gonna make is, originally, I voted to place it on the warrant because I thought it was important for people to hear the argument. I'm also concerned about the debt load everybody's carrying along with their taxes, so, whatever happens is gonna wind up being, because it's there, and I haven't recommended the support it, but, uh, the, the, the public needs the opportunity to be able to determine whether it's a compelling enough reason to go ahead with it. I, I hear the argument, and it makes sense, but it really is gonna be up to the people who have to pay, uh, for the road, to determine that it was urgent enough for them to consider funding it this year as opposed to next year. So, make the argument, it's a town meeting.
Plan to do so.
Any other comments? Larry or Michael?
I have none.
Good presentation, Lincoln. Let me ask you, on the, uh, tip funds that, you know, we mentioned 124 fell apart, and this, and it won't work for this road because of the, well, enough width, are there other roads that this makes more sense to go after tip funding for?
When Mr. Clark, uh, was appointed administrator five years ago, that was-
That wasn't April 4th, April 4th question, I was just thinking.
I, I wish it were. Um, I, we, we've had some really good success, uh, with that program. Unfortunately, uh, with the butter objection, and then there was zero support at the non-binding referendum article that year during town meeting, uh, that went on for over an hour, it seemed like the, the political will to build the required footprint did not exist. Honestly, this was the next candidate, because of the size and the complexity, we were headed to do this road, but if you couldn't build it when you didn't need private property taking, I think the likelihood of getting it by when you do need private property taking is pretty low. So as far as any, any other roads, 39 could possibly be a candidate, but we, we paved 39 about 10 years ago or something. I really, it's hard pressed, because you need 43 feet of a footprint, uh, to construct the two, the two elevens, um, the five-foot, uh, shoulders, or bike lanes they call, and five-and-a-half-foot sidewalks.
And that's, there's no flexibility in that at all?
There was flexibility when we were doing 124, there no longer is to be-
When we started 124, it was, it changed, I thought maybe it changed administration, maybe we changed back.
I think, uh, to the, to the point, Larry, uh, there's only certain town roads that we have authority that we can use tip, you know, funds on, uh, those are limited in terms of it, so the approach that we've taken, uh, we do have a tip program or a project on for the West Harwich, but that's Route 28. Uh, when, neither, neither one of us are giant fans of using, you know, tip funds to help the state do its improvements, uh, but I do think sometimes there are certainly arguments to be made that to leave an area, you know, without improvements doesn't make sense either. So, we, we do have a project for, it did slide back to 2024, it was 2022, 2023, and now it's 2024, uh, to do that stretch of, uh, Route 28 from the Herring River Bridge to Division Street.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sure. Um, 15, 20 years ago, uh, the, the standards were very different, and we could use these funds, a town, uh, we were getting eight, nine million at the time, uh, for the Cape, and you had various projects spread around. Today, the only projects on the tip are either on state property or at an intersection of state property, because no towns can get this footprint that's required that looks very city-like, um, through, politically. And, um, I, I, there's nothing on the tip right now. Mr. Clark does bring up that our project just slid, actually, two years, um, as a, a lot of them are, because the state is trying to improve Yarmouth Road and Route 28, and they're talking about buying the cam building out and putting another, a third rail line in there, and that price tag just keeps escalating, escalating, and draining everything else of that pot of money. So the MPO did vote that, uh, what, last week, I think it was, to move that to 2024.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you, Link. Ed?
Um, sorry, I assume, uh, from a, a, a program standard, Great Western, uh, would qualify. Is it the, but, from a, a political standpoint of, of making that road look like an urban road running through some of our more beautiful urban, uh, rural areas, um, it would probably be hardgoing.
That's correct, Sleckman, McManus, uh, um, more than, just if you think of your main connector roads are pretty much eligible. Just the main, you know, Route 39, 124, Sisson, you know, the, those main roads are, are tip-eligible. Where you could build that footprint and meet the criteria and have, uh, the abutters agree with it is beyond me.
Yeah.
And, and not just in Howard, this is all across the Cape, it's just, uh, the complete streets requirements don't really fit the character of the Cape.
Thank you, Link. So, I, my only other question was, we had talked about, um, I think it was when you were here in December, some, one of the board members asked about splitting it up, it might have been you, Michael.
Yes.
Um, and at the time, I believe you, you were saying you, you don't see that as a cost savings, right? That you would have to re, um, equip everything again, back out to the same spot if you were to break it up into sections?
You, you're kicking the can down the road. I, I mean, when you fragment a project, it's never gonna be cheaper, I mean, how often do you see costs go down?
Right.
Quite frankly. Uh, you have economies of scale when you keep it intact. Um, you know, this is the cost that it is, and hopefully, I, I hope to see a construction number come out, um, at, at four or under four million. I, I'm really hopeful, based upon the Brewster project from last year, that's about where the number should be.
And those bids are due 416?
Pardon me?
416, they're due?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yep.
Michael?
And regardless of what the bid comes in at, you're still gonna put the million dollars towards it?
I serve at your pleasure, I, I absolutely, this is the priority for the department, this is what I, I think is right for the town, um, so whatever I have to do and whatever you'll consent to, will, I wanna see this project through fruition.
Chris?
The warrant has been constructed to do the million dollar.
Ed?
Well, you know, when I was first elected Sleckman, there were a lot of projects to be done on town buildings, because maintenance projects had been kicked down the road, and... And the maintenance projects became much larger than simply a maintenance project. Became, in many cases, reconstruction of the front facade of Brooks Academy, that major thing, the major thing that we did over at the library. And so I'm, you know, I agree with you. Pushing this further off would simply increase the costs to the taxpayer.
I'd like to point out, this is the first book job that we have done. Initially, the engineering on this would have been about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on previous projects we've done. We got this done for a little over forty thousand dollars over the course of two years. It's a cost saving. So we're trying to be frugal, but these are the numbers of what they are. I mean, this, this road is in dire straits. It should have been addressed years ago. We hadn't because we thought it was gonna be a tip project. And then when that, it's no longer seemed viable, I had to propose it to you folks five years ago. And then we got it on the capital plan and have waited our, our turn, so to speak.
Right, yeah, you follow the process. Do, do we want to...
Julie, this is, this is, this is still under new business. We're taking the warrant article...
Right, under, right.
Under warrant article.
So we'll just have, end the discussion and move on.
Yeah, I've got more comments, but I'm gonna wait until the article.
Okay. Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
So now we will go back to old business, Robert Freitas, Hawx Nest Road, Round Cove Road, Raptor Road. Good evening.
Hi. Robert Freitas.
Liz Dubuque.
This one we brought, we polled, we've already been through the presentation, we pulled this for Link to come in, and I believe that was the...
Yeah, we...
Consensus of the board was to get where Link stood with this. I'm just trying to avoid you having to go through all of the...
And the neighbors.
Same conversations. Certainly can do what you wanna do, but if you don't wanna revisit all of it.
Right, so, and is Link, is he still there? Oh, there you are. Link, so we had asked that we get an update on the other roads in town that also need attention, and, you know, as we were having the discussion on these other particular Hawx Nest, Round Cove Road, and Raptor Road, to get a feel for what other roads are out there that need similar attention, if you could give us.
If we're addressing gravel roads and parking lots, we have eight other gravel roads in town. We have twelve gravel parking lots. My gravel, and most of them are T-base. We attend to those three to six times a year, depending on weather conditions, usage, and so forth. We usually have T-base that's stockpiled, that we have, from a process of grabbing the millings and so forth, we have come back for any roadwork, we save it, we hire a company to come in and make us T-base, and then we utilize that T-base to address the gravel roads and, and parking lots.
And so in terms of looking at, and I'll open it up to the board, but in terms of looking at these three roads versus what else we have in town at this point, is it, are you comfortable in making a priority list, or, you know, do you feel that these are lower on the priority, higher on the priority list?
These were nowhere on the priority list.
Okay. That's fine. That, thank you, candid answer. Questions from the board?
Given how much we do a year, do we have much of a stockpile, or are we going to be out buying T-base at...
Yeah, we, we've been buying for the last two years. We, we are, Chris is in the process right now of securing some quotes from some companies to come in and make us a big, giant pile of T-base. So we don't have any on stock right now. That's why we've been having all the millings come to the disposal area, and any roadwork we do, we've always had that same process in place. And we, and you stretch it by not using them directly, because you cut it by about a third of screen sand. So you get a better, a better, more uniform product out of it, and it saves us from having to buy T-base. We get it made for about five or six dollars a ton, and I think going, price picked up is seventeen dollars a ton.
So you, but you, you are saying that we have had to go out and buy at seventeen a ton?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Don?
It's not so much of a question, but I mean, I gave me, it gave me the opportunity to go back over the last license agreement, which, by the way, hasn't expired yet because it wasn't signed until May of last year. I don't know, in so many different ways, it... Let's get to the agreement here. The licensee acknowledges and agrees that the town shall not have any obligation to pay for, contribute towards the improvements, or other costs of work on page one. Page two, and three, licensee accepts roadway as is conditioned for the purposes of license and acknowledges and agrees the town has made no representations or warranties regarding the fitness of the roadway, and nothing in this license shall be construed as requiring the town to maintain the roadway, including without limitation the licensed area and/or the improvements made there too. Item five, the party's acknowledged, let's see here, licensee show, procure all necessary work. There's a warranty that's built into this thing, too, that over the course of the year, the person, the person who signed the license, which would be Mr. Freitas, is obligated to fix anything that was defective during, or became defective during the period of time of the license for a year. I went back and revisited the road itself. I mean, it's a county road. It's listed in the assessor's book as a county road. The county administrator, when he gave it back to us last year, didn't say, "Thou shalt repair it." He said, "I won't stand in your way if you want to." The state never submitted a letter that they really wanted this done back then. My biggest concern is, especially given the economic condition, we're, I mean, we're talking every single item of every night that has to do with an expenditure about whether it's valid or not, whether we really need to do it or not. It's not on a priority list, and my question is, are we gonna start taking every cart path in this town and convert it into a paved road? There's a certain obligation, I mean, it's kind of like the inverse of the airport that people move next to. When they move next to the airport, knowing there's an airport there, and then start complaining about the noise from the airport, you have to wonder. But the question that I have is, Mr. Freitas has been involved through the years in clearing titles, and he makes money doing that, which is great. It's perfectly legal activity, and that's how he proceeds. But this should be built into the cost of those properties. When you cleared the titles for those properties, the road was the road. And by the way, to your point, last, last meeting about you had to expand the road, the agreement specifically requires you to stay within eighteen feet last time, and that didn't happen. So I'm not sure I have any faith that a new agreement would be adhered to any more than an old one, but I'm sure as hell not gonna say that a road that's not on a priority list that really was a cart path, that we should be on the hook for making sure that we maintain it to the point it gets paved somehow, which is really where I think this is going. If people wanna buy those properties, like the other people on that road, in Hawx Nest Road particularly, they can buy it within the context that it exists. And if it needs to be upgraded, that's a cost of doing business that should be allocated to every lot as a private transaction. If that makes it unreasonable, I think it's unreasonable, the town should be in a position of subsidizing a private transaction. So, I mean, there's no circumstance under which I'd support this.
Okay, so the agreement, I think, I don't know, I can't find the time period, but we'll say it was for a year.
It is.
Well, that was seventeen. This is nineteen, so that's more than a year. So that's done.
Okay, but the road, the road width was increased.
I'll give you a highlighted one. State law says...
I have, I have.
No, this is the state law on town roads.
It's a county road.
It's a county road. The town is supposed to maintain it. Oops, sorry. First line, highways and townways, including road crossings, such highways, townways, shall be kept repaired and maintained at the expense of the town they are situated. They may not be reason, they may be reasonably safe and convenient for travelers with horses, teams of vehicles, carriages, for all seasons. All city and towns, a city or town shall submit a letter requesting such repair and approval by the State Department upon the highway. Upon receipt of such approval, reimbursement of the Commonwealth may occur. But after that, it just says they may pay it, but they don't even have to. By law, the town's required to maintain its roads. So...
If you wanna let Jerry talk first.
Where's the county?
I'm gonna, we have...
Okay, hold on, here's another thing.
Well, hold, hold on.
A highway...
Hold on, excuse, excuse me. I'm gonna let Jerry Beltis, who's been standing here patiently, speak, because we have the information in front of us now, we can read through it.
Can we just make one point?
Let me just finish the rest of these.
One point.
They're all the same.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. A highway within the town limits but accepted as such part therein by, such action becomes unnecessary for public use. A city or town shall not discontinue any road or diminish its width therein, shall not be accessed upon the county or any part of that expense. In other words, you cannot diminish the width. You're not supposed to let the trees grow in so the road's nine feet wide. That's just the law.
That was...
I should have never been forced to...
She's, she's got a copy of it.
The other part of the state law.
So we have a copy, and this is helpful to have prior to as well.
It's just the state law.
But if we could...
And if you read the state laws, you're liable for the repair. Any action that occurs...
So remember that these are not the only roads in town. We have a whole town full of roads that we've just heard from our DPW director. So if you'll excuse me, I'm gonna go to Jerry Beltis. Go ahead, Jerry.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I applaud them for developing the land, taking property that's owners unknown, that isn't on the tax base, and putting it on the tax base. They're developing the property. The town should not be in the business of helping developers. This is gonna open up Pandora's Box for every developer that now comes down and wants to put a road in, to say, "Well, you did it for him, now you're gonna do it for me." This is a bad precedent, and we shouldn't be helping him. If it's something that he needs help with, maybe he can take on a partner or something else, but this is not something the town was going to do, and like Link said, it's not on the priority list. Being a member of the Traffic Safety Committee, we're asking Link and Mr. Clark to put an article on, was a hundred thousand dollars and got shot down. This has taken some of that money out of the pool that we need to fix our town roads and some of the intersections that we feel are need-work. This is for a small percentage of people rather than the general population. It's a much larger need for some of the improvements. This shouldn't be put forth or voted on at all. It's nothing that the town should help the developers.
Thank you, Jerry.
But it's a townway.
So, hold, hold on.
Okay.
There has to be order to this meeting, and currently there isn't any.
Thank you.
So at this point, the board is gonna comment, and when we're gonna allow you to comment, I'll go back to you. Thank you. Michael?
Just first, I wanna address Jerry's comment. Jerry, the article that you're talking about, the board hasn't even seen yet. So Traffic Safety, which you're not here speaking for, correct?
Correct.
Hasn't presented that project to the board yet, correct?
Correct.
Which is why the board removed it from the warrant, correct?
Yes, I was ignorant of getting it on...
No, no, they weren't ignorant at all. It just hasn't come before.
I didn't, I didn't know that we had to go through the proper procedure to get things in line for the...
I just wanted the clarification. I'm not saying you did anything wrong.
It's all right.
As far as the, as far as the way that this conversation's gone, I'm gonna correct one thing I said two weeks ago. It's not a state park. It was pointed out on the internet that it's a state forest. My bad, so we're gonna call it...
That's not true.
Okay, we'll go back to that. Mr. Freitas, Mr. Freitas, Mr. Freitas is all I keep hearing. It's not Mr. Freitas. We're not doing this for Mr. Freitas. This is being done because it goes into a state forest that a lot of people use, and as we heard from one of our public safety officials, fire chief last week, he agrees with it. Keep the road open for the public and for emergency vehicles to be able to go in and out. I didn't ask the police chief to come tonight, but the police chiefs, the cruisers have been driving down there and stopping illegal fires, stopping illegal dumping, stopping illegal, any number of illegal things. So this isn't to me about Mr. Freitas and helping a developer. It never has been. It's about opening up a road to be used by the entire community, and if you go out there and spend any amount of time out there, there's a lot of people out there. So that's what it's about for me. Don, you referred to it as a cartway, but then you referred to it as a county road. As far as the county roads go, the county gave all the roads back to the town years ago, and the county only has buildings now. The county has no more roads. Whatever the piece of paper is, fine. We can verify...
It's our assessor's book.
They, well, that's great, but the county, and it's on record, Chris, because it was brought before us when that licensing agreement took place, we have a copy from the county that says that they gave all the roads to the town. So this isn't about Mr. Freitas. And if, if I'm correct, the town of Harwich already grades that road, but they only grade, they only grade a little more than half of it. They already plow that road, but a little more than half. So the only piece we're talking about is from where they normally stop until the intersection at Round Cove Road. And I can't, and, and I'm down there quite a bit, so if the town's not grading it and the town's not putting, then somebody's doing it. But this isn't about the developer, and it seems to be being made about the developer. I've been very, very clear with my requests, which Link and the Highway Department have done a great job making it so that people can access that park and not get stuck in the craters out there. This isn't about fixing a road for a developer. And I say it's our responsibility to fix this road. As I said last week, there was somebody in there in a wheelchair going up and down the road, and as I talked to them, they were very, very happy that the town of Harwich took the time to fix that road so they could enjoy that and not be in Thompson's Field around the dogs, or not be in a beach parking lot. They were very happy about it. That's all I have.
Larry?
But, yeah, I argued against this the last, last meeting, or at least made it I held some points. But what, what concerned me about was the implication in the cover letter at least, that the T-mix was free. They were just dumping it there. And when you find out it's not free, we're paying, the towns have to pay that to, and so I put it in the same category of moving sand around, that, you know, there should be some charge, could be nominal, it should go for bid. I wonder, Mike, you make a good point, but I wonder what, what changed when the license was signed a couple of years ago to now, in which it was stated, and I, I can, you know, read from this, that the purpose of the license is to improve access to licensee's parcel. So it is, in fact, about Freitas at this point when they wrote the license. And so I have some concern about the overall budget, and, you know, I take the point that it goes to a place for more people to go to, but it's still not clear to me that the town should pay for that.
Thank you, Larry.
Can I just comment on one?
I also think that we had asked for some feedback because, from the neighbors. We don't have any feedback on the neighbors. I know that originally I had recommended if this was, this was gonna go forward for paving, isn't the process normally a public hearing? So I don't know if you wanna comment on that, Chris, or if Link wants to comment on that, or if anyone from the public would like to have input, but please just identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Kathy Karas, and I am a homeowner on Round Cove Road, and I've been living there for over thirty years, and it was back before it was dirt, I mean, before it was paved. So as far as paving it, now that we're paved down to the last house, I can now attest that people go as fast as forty. And I have a three-year-old grandson with me. I also have horses. And so, and I just drove that way tonight, actually, from the last house all the way to the Four Corners. All big ruts have been taken care of. They're all filled. So it's very passable for any size car. And I know that if we want to, you know, increase the, you know, width, and we wanna, you know, whatever they wanna do with it, it will increase the traffic. And so as far as getting down to Hawx Nest, for everybody to go down to, when I wanted to call Nickerson, who actually is in charge of this Hawx Nest State Park, I asked for barrels, because people do go back there, and I couldn't even get... and I couldn't even get a barrel back there, because it wasn't in their budget to dump the barrels. So, people that do go down there, frequent traffic, leave a lot of trash. So, I'd make sure the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts or whatever would go down and pick up trash, and when we do go back there to swim, we pick up trash. So, I have a lot of concerns about, you know, widening it and, who knows, eventually paving. It's not something that, as a homeowner on Round Cove, I'd like to see any more paving of. It's already fast enough, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Hoffman Terry, Round Cove Road. I've got really, yeah, two concerns in general. One is about the process, and the other is about the substance. On the process, I'm not sure how many people know about this proposal. And it's, in fact, when I was looking at the agendas, it wasn't really clear what the proposal is. In the letter that Mr. Freitas sent to the selectmen on January 14th, he talks about reviewing the condition of the road, he talks about improvements. The only place it says paving seemed to be in the agenda. So, it seemed to be a little bit unclear what exactly is being proposed. I think if a butters, neighbors, people who use Hoxnest knew that that was what this was actually about, I think there'd be a lot more concern. So, that's the first thing. If we actually are talking about actually paving it, or T-base, or whatever, I echo the previous speaker. I think, you know, people will use that to go down Round Cove and then go down Hoxnest, and it'll be basically a throughway. And it'll completely change the way that road gets used. Basically, people can walk down there easily, because cars have to go relatively slowly. You know, if you make that really easily passable, you're gonna have problems with, you know, people pushing strollers and people walking dogs having to compete with cars that are gonna go pretty fast. So, I think that if more people knew that this was a proposal, I think they'd have concerns about it. I think it will change the character, and I'd like to see more public input, frankly, before any action gets taken. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I just mention something right now? I know, maybe a lot of turn, the paving thing was just a typo from the secretary. So, we're having a lot of discussion about paving, but-
So, we don't need clarification on that? If it's not clear on our agenda, if it's not clear on our agenda, we are obligated to make it clear to the public. We've had the problem before, it's not just with your agenda item.
Well, I'm just saying, no one on the board is mentioning that it wasn't to be paved.
So, excuse me, excuse me. So, we're well aware of how to deal with something that's on our agenda that may not be clear to the public. We would bring it back and make it clear to the public. It's happened many times before, this would not be the first time. Jerry?
Are we talking about all three items here, or just the Hoxnest Road and the T-base, or are we talking about Round Cove Road and Raptor Road?
So, we, good point. So, we've had no discussion on Raptor Road, we've only heard Hoxnest and Round Cove. So, did you want to speak to Raptor?
I'm not doing anything on Raptor.
So, there's another reason our agenda is not right, because we're saying it's Raptor, and we're not talking about Raptor. So, this is an item that I think we, as a board, have to bring back, make it clearer to the public's point. I also, again, you know, Link, I'm gonna ask you the question, if you don't mind coming up, is in terms of having the road currently where it's located, and the fact that we've done some paving, T-base, is this something that ever justifies a public hearing?
I think that's more of a political question than an operational question.
Okay, fair enough.
I'd like to point out, Mr. Freitas improved the first section of Hoxnest Road. We inspected it, it met our standards, we took over the ongoing maintenance of that. The section he's working on now has not been T-based, it's been all cleared, and has not been T-based. And if and when he does that and follows through with the permit that was granted him, the license that was granted him, we would follow through with the same process. We inspect it, if the work's acceptable, then we add that to our ongoing maintenance list. Grading dirt roads and parking lots is not really a cost item, it's labor. That's really what it is. There's not a lot of cost here relative to, I just talked about a, basically a $1.4 million road maintenance program. This is very minor cost, what we're talking about. I mean, it's really up to the discretion of the board, what, what if any involvement you want us to have. I just viewed this as a cartway that, you know, we had no business reason to go and improve. He requested it about a decade ago, and ended up with the planning board in front of this board.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been said a number of times about the license, the license, the license. The license, unless I'm missing something here, only pertains to Hoxnest Road, Seth Whitefield. There's other, there's been other work, there's other requests for more work. The thing that really would get me is to do this without any public input, it would be malfeasance on our part, because honest to God, there's a difference in the use of the road that's pretty profound, as somebody mentioned. Because if we wind up making an interconnection, the road's 20 feet wide going down from the Lutheran Church all the way to Queen Anne Road, you'd have to be almost insane to want to go down 137 and turn right, and then go down to the roundabout and come around. Your GPS is gonna immediately show that it's a cut-through. If I were living on that road, I would be furious if I had no idea that this was happening and I didn't get a chance to weigh in on it.
Thank you, Don. Michael?
I just, I want to be clear and thank the residents for coming and speaking. At no point have I ever pushed paving on that road, and that was a mistake from our office, not something that they requested. The request, there's two things, and we seem to be going around in a circle. Seth Whitefield Road, we gave a licensing agreement to do the work on Seth Whitefield Road, and that's been done. The work that's been done on Round Cove Road to date, Pasture Homes, was done by a vote of this board, had nothing to do with Bob Freitas. It was a vote of this board to just fill the holes that were there. And now, Bob has requested that we make that town road as wide as it's supposed to be, which, to Julie's point, she'll put back on the agenda, notify the public and to Don's. But it's not, but the pavement part of it was never discussed, it was a typo by our office.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair. Chris Nickerson, road manager for the town. It's my understanding that this whole process began when the contractor requested permits to create buildable lots along Round Cove Road. The building inspector determined that he did not have adequate access, and that's what precipitated this whole widening and improving of Round Cove Road, was to provide adequate access to the contractor's lots.
Thank you, appreciate the clarification.
This was Seth Whitefield, Hoxnest Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed folk.
Road with your name. So, I think, at the, oh, go ahead.
Jim Joyce, I live on Cannon Hill, and I walk along Round Cove just about every day. So, there's been a lot of improvement on Round Cove past the end of the paving. So, I guess my question is, who's paying for that?
Well-
You are.
That's-
We are?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the request before us tonight, was to talk about, you know, having additional, Don, with T-base, that wasn't really gonna cost much, but we've heard from our DPW director that they're currently buying.
So, I mean, like anything else, there's a process you go through, they come before you, then they'll go to other folks and so forth, and we're gonna follow the process, and we're gonna do it the way the code and the law and everything is designed to protect us as the folks that live on that road. And it is a very quiet, well-shaded country road, rural, and I certainly echo the sentiments of the folks who've talked about this. Because frankly, that's part of the reason that most of us live back there. It's very quiet, it's rural, you can go back, you can swim, you can walk, you can hike, ride your horses, do all those sorts of things, and it's not a main thoroughfare. If the idea is to make it a main thoroughfare, then I would humbly submit to the board that we bring this up before town meeting. And at least get the folks in East Harwich who live in that neighborhood the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, do you have a new comment?
Yes, every time a developer comes into town, there's a couple on Route 39 who are being developed. There's one just before the 400 Plaza, and then there's another one on the other side of the post office. The developer came in, went through the planning board, got permission, built the road, put the utilities in, the town water, paved it, did everything by himself. This is being piecemealed, and the town's being taken for a ride. He's gonna take and ask us to do this, then next thing you know, we're gonna be asked to put in town water down there, and lighting, and electricity, and all the other utilities for a developer that should be going in by a developer, not the town. This is something that needs to be done through the planning board and not through the Board of Selectmen piecemealing it.
Thank you, Jerry. Link?
To the previous speaker, you asked about cost around Cove Road. There was nothing but sunk cost. We had hardener that we had in stock, we went over, after the board voted to improve it, it was, I believe, about a day and a half of two guys with a dump truck and a loader. So, there was no cost other than our labor-
Labor costs, right.
For fixing what we did.
Right.
And the same thing on the state portion that we fixed going down to the pond. Same, it was the same thing, there was virtually no cost, just our labor.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I have to say to that last comment, though, Link, is that if that same truck had come down to my road and dumped that on my driveway, everyone would be raising holy hell, because it's not no cost. There's cost, and it should be a public purpose that's being addressed, and the public should have some input on that purpose. People who live on both of those roads have every right to have some expectation that their government is gonna listen to their opinions on this, because it radically changes the way that road is gonna be, those roads are gonna be used. There's no question about that.
That's exactly why I didn't do anything until the Board of Selectmen voted to make improvements to Round Cove Road.
Thank you, Link. I think at this point, it's pretty clear that, A, this has to come back to us, but I also think it needs a public hearing. I mean, I think that we need to, to the point of the people here tonight, and to the point I made previously when we talked about this. I really think that this is something that a butter should be notified of. You know, it's, there's a process involved, and we should do that. We've already heard that it's not a priority, and I think we need to bring it back anyway, just the way it's even advertised. But I think prior to bringing it back, it would be better to have a public hearing and have that feedback. Michael?
Just for clarification, are we talking about a public hearing for Round Cove Road? Are we talking about a public hearing to grade and fill potholes on Seth Whitefield?
Well, I think that if we're talking about, go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, if the grading of the second part of Seth Whitefield is the point, that busts out, that one section that was done is a good 24 to 26 feet wide in some sections. We said that it was gonna be 18. So, if this winds up widening the vegetation on the other portion of that road right before it hits Round Cove, then I think it's a whole thing that you're really asking for an opinion, because it's just like a bottleneck. You can only go as fast as the slowest portion. So, if we facilitate that being widened, then that actually implements the higher speed that we're talking about for the rest of the roadway. I think it's the whole thing that we want to advertise.
Chief?
I have no interest in widening, make it higher, but what I do have an interest in is, Don, if you call for help, we can get to your house. To these folks on Round Cove Road and Seth Whitefield Road, until the DPW did go in and fill in those potholes, we can't get there, or we have to take a long way around. So, I'm not here to speak pro, con, or anything about a developer or making it wider, or any, anything else. The existing road that is there is lovely, but we have to be able to drive through it. And I think now, as a citizen, I also enjoy the woods more than I do the beach. But I want to be able to just respectfully be able to use these neighborhoods as well. So, on one hand, as the fire chief, I'm saying, when those roads get to a point where we cannot pass through them, I reach out to the DPW director, and they will fill in the four-foot holes, puddles, so that we can at least get through. I came before, and I agree, and that's what, we're trying to support these folks. You know, I came before the town to buy a special-purpose fire truck, and this is one area where we needed it. I can't put, and that's why we went for that truck, so that we don't have to make the road 18 or 20 feet wide. I don't believe you can there, but we have at least got to have access. So, let's keep this to the, to the smallest denominator, is that when they call for help, we can get there.
Right, and I think that nobody disagrees with that.
But we're getting off on a tangent here, when I start hearing public hearings, I want to be able to pick up the phone and ask Mr. Hooper, saying, "I can't get my ambulance down to X-number Round Cove or Hoxnest," and he'll go in with a grader and a loader and just make it so we can get through.
And that, the question Michael just posed, when we're talking grading and filling in with dirt, that's one thing. When we're talking about T-base, we've changed the conversation.
Correct, you lost me at that. Alls I want to be able to do is drive a fire truck down the road.
And I agree with you. I think all in all, we all agree that people should have access. So, if we're talking about grading and filling in with dirt, to the point that, you know, that Link just made a few minutes ago, that's, but that is not the conversation that led us here. It was about T-base, it was about not costing a lot of money. It was about, this is something that has to be done. What we've heard from, you know, earlier this evening, we heard from Link, that it is not a priority currently on his list. I don't think anyone here has a problem with putting the dirt in and leveling it out. But when we're talking about paving the road, et cetera, it requires more public input. I mean, the same way that, to Don's point, if you're, you know, gonna create an access that people are gonna possibly start looping around to avoid certain traffic in the summer, it's another concern for the public, the people who are living there. So, I think, to be fair, you know, or to Mr. Joyce's point about having a conversation on town meeting floor, it's a public forum, we should have a public conversation. So, I think we, A, need to bring it back, never mind the way we've got it on our agenda, and we certainly need to come back about the specific roads we're gonna talk about. Raptor Road shouldn't even be on here if you didn't want to discuss it. So, we shouldn't have put that on there. In addition, we need to be clear that we're talking about paving. So, I think two things need to happen, and I personally, and I leave it to- I know, we're talking about grading.
Okay, you said paving.
But he, no, but Michael, prior to, it was about bringing in-
T-base, not pavement, two different settings.
T-base, T-base. Not talking about dirt.
It's just gravel, basically.
Currently, we're talking about dirt, and then T-base, which, okay, it's not pavement, but it kind of is, so.
So, Madam Chair, I think I'll meet with Mr. Hooper, we'll see if we can put together some kind of notice, some kind of scope of what we're talking about, so that we have a document that we can kind of show people for discussion purposes. And there were three requests, so in the package, Raptor Road was in there. It's a different location, but it was in there in one of the requests.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, now we're not talking about it, so. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just so we go out with a positive thought here, the fire chief is right. I don't think, I know I didn't, I don't think anybody here is saying if there's a real problem and it impinges on the safety, that he can't pick up the phone and call the DPW director, because he can. Nothing we're discussing has anything to do with that. So, call away if you've got a problem.
Thank you. Okay, so, we'll have, we'll revisit this.
I just want to, can, can they grade the rest of Hoxnest? Because now, it is pretty rutty. And I've brought these papers just because they're very clear that the town is supposed to take care of town roads. It's simple paragraph.
I understand that, I think all of us up here understand that it's our responsibility as a town to take care of our roads. I mean, again, the roads we're talking about tonight are not the only roads in town, to be fair. So, I think we need to, you know, have you come back and, and this conversation for this evening. Thank you.
And then my, my other point was, any town road, and this is in the town, no road shall be accepted by the town unless it has been cleared to a width of 20 feet. And that's the town, so on Round Cove Road, I can't believe the town can get away without following its own rules. It's a town road, these are town bylaws, it doesn't seem that unreasonable to have the town follow its own rules.
But we're bringing this back at this point.
Right, so, Link, did you have a comment before we end this? Link, did you have a comment before we end this part of the discussion?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the warrant articles.
Madam Chair, just on the first warrant article, I just wanted to pass out, and Carol here is in the audience, just on the Article Four, the warrant, the proposed budget. So the board has seen some of this material before, but there was a nuanced change. That's the same thing, did I give you enough?
Yeah, I think so.
You have?
Uh, I need one more.
One more, sorry. So just in terms of it, when, we made the reductions and the adjustments when Monomoy came in for it, and this was presented to FinCom on that Tuesday night, right after the board meeting. On the Monomoy, they did a remove stabilization, which was $36,954. That number, actually, we funded from free cash, so we couldn't take that as a cost saving to the operating budget. So because it came from free cash. So what Carol did, you know, we had a conversation, and basically, in a nutshell here, we moved up top. You see that we funded additional small free capital at $40,000. So because we had two funding sources, we needed to fix that and rebalance that. So everything else was discussed at the meeting and essentially concurred with. What this does, the adjustments that were made, it does restore the IT Administrator, the Council on Aging, the eight additional hours, and the Citizen Self-Serve, and does reflect the revised non-union personnel salary schedule, which we will have on for the, which we will have on for the next Selectmen's meeting.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The halfway down under budget reductions, Town Clerk salary, is that the Town Clerk? Or is that the office of the Town Clerk? There we go.
I believe it's the Town Clerk's salary.
Hi, I'm sorry, the question again, please.
You've got a $4,775 decrease in the Town Clerk's salary. Is that?
Correct.
The Town Clerk's salary or the office of the Town Clerk?
The Town Clerk's salary.
Is everybody aware that we, we made a promise last year, we were gonna tether the Town Clerk to the SEIU contract levels? And we've already voted this, and that we're, we asked to take back something that we've given?
The Town Clerk's position is listed in the personnel, non-union personnel, well, I'm just, the Town Clerk's position is listed in the non-union personal bylaw salaried schedules. That salary schedule was, it replicate, and originally, it replicated the SEIU contract. Inadvertently, we, the change was made last week to bring that down to steps, to create steps three through 12 instead of steps one through 10 in that contract, which reduced the positions from about 10% increases on an annual basis to about four and a half.
The only reason I brought this up is because at town meeting last year, the discussion was that, that Huthert too, as a matter of fact, it was Bob Lawton's suggestion originally, is that she was gonna be brought in for the purpose of compensation to tie it to the SEIU rates. And because we're not able to go back into the SEIU contract, we can't change those, but we are changing this. And I think that's disingenuous at this point. We've already voted, I mean, it's been printed, the budget, we've already voted that amount, and this seems to be the only vulnerable person that we can actually pull money away from, and I don't think it's right.
Well, we pulled money away from all of the people that were listed in that.
But none of them had a discussion on town meeting floor relating specifically to SEIU contract.
Well, nevertheless, I could tell you that there are a number of people that are in that non-union salary schedules that felt very uncomfortable with those significant increases and did not want to accept them.
Thank you, Carol. Chris?
Yeah, the non-union schedule has not yet been voted. That's what we will have back for the board's consideration. So these adjustments do take into account, but the board does need to formally vote them and decide how it wants to approach.
Thank you. Any other, Michael?
I gotta say, I have to agree with Don. I guess, I guess I wanna know where we're going with this warrant article. You guys voted the budget last week. What do you, are you proposing to vote the amendments? Is that why it's on tonight?
This changed.
Well, that's a great question. What we're trying to do is, we need to actually send the actual booklet to the printer.
Right.
Pretty quickly, probably by, at the latest, the end of the week. FinCom voted specific numbers that we put in there to do. My request to the board this evening is, we gave you the preliminary numbers that we had. We've made adjustments subsequent. We would like to have those numbers, if the board votes those numbers in concurrence with FinCom, to publish those in the book. We can go either.
And then they continue.
It can go either way. We can keep the original numbers that we had, the preliminary numbers, and then when we make a motion at town meeting, we'll have to make those necessary adjustments. Or because we haven't sent it to the printer, all the FinCom votes are still being put into the book and tabulated to be sent to the printer, so for printing purposes, we can make the adjustments if the board votes consistent with FinCom.
Thank you, Chris. I do wanna remind people that in the last couple of years, we haven't officially, I believe, voted a budget. Is that correct?
Last year, the recommendation was based upon the FinCom budget.
Right. Okay, Michael?
So, back to the Town Clerk's position. And I heard, I hear what Carol said, and the non-union stuff hasn't been voted yet.
Correct.
But how are we going to tie, how are we not going to look at the conversation on town meeting floor and the debate that happened on town meeting floor? As a matter of fact, that was debated for an hour, I believe, whereas the budget was five minutes. How are we not going to up, live up to that? How are we gonna change it?
The, the simple answer to that is, last year, we put the Town Clerk into our non-union schedule. Every year, the non-union schedule gets adjusted. We haven't adjusted it yet. We do, as a practice, mirror what was in the union schedule, the management union schedule. When we had discussions with the, the non-union people, they were concerned that it was too much, and they asked us to not have it be as much. So it's closer to 4%, and we will propose that in terms of the recommendation for next week.
I guess the other, the other thing is, I had asked the chair to put the budgets back on the agenda, or at least to consider putting the budgets back on the agenda, because I was very disappointed last week, the one meeting I've missed all year, that the money items were all voted in my absence. And as a, as a sitting Selectman, the budgets are probably the most important thing that we vote. And my voice not being in there, my vote not being in there was a disappointment to me. Because that's already been voted, that would take a reconsideration vote from somebody that's sitting at this table, or it is what it is, and it will go into the book as four to zero.
Well, no, I'll move to reconsider.
Yeah, we put this on for reconsideration.
But, but I'll make, I'll move to reconsider the vote.
Second.
I'm just saying that that's why it's back on.
It's been moved in second, and he moved his second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Michael abstained. Ed, did you say aye?
Yes. Have a question.
Ed?
So, the, the document that you handed out right now is from your recommendation, the current correct amounts, based on your recommendation. There were some things you had to move around.
I had to move one thing around because of the funding source, but this is what was discussed with the board at the last meeting. Unless there's any other adjustments that, I don't, what we wanted to do, FinCom voted the numbers on the second sheet for the operating budget, their Monomoy budget, and the Cape Tech budget. So we wanted to make sure that the Board of Selectmen has the numbers that FinCom voted last Tuesday.
For clarification's sake, these changes proposed here are reflected in the following pages.
Correct.
And I, well, just for further clarification, I do believe the change of the 4,775 was a, was a difference from what we had done previously.
Yes.
Yes.
That one was also different.
Madam Chair, I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstanding something. Can, can we come back again? You said that the people were uncomfortable with the magnitude of what they were receiving? Are, are you saying that the Town Clerk came to you and said she wanted a $4,775 reduction in her pay?
Actually, three or four other people.
Are you saying that the Town Clerk came back here?
She did not specifically. She's aware of it. We did make sure other folks were aware of what we were doing.
But that was more in the, along the lines of informing her that that's what you were doing, not so much a collaborative event?
No, it was not a collaborative event.
Do you have any comments? Did you ask?
Dana?
Just historically, we don't have a quorum tonight, so we'll just advise or answer questions or whatever. There used to be in the warrant, a column that was identified as the Finance Committee's vote. This even goes back to when I was a Selectman. And that would often be the reference one in the motion, so that any changes were based on one set of numbers that people could go and look through and so forth. I know it's identified a little bit differently today, but there is one column within the columns that the Finance Committee voted the other, last, our last meeting. And the only other thing I'll just say on the Town Clerk's position that hasn't been discussed at all from the very beginning is, I believe, and I'm not sure if it's in the charter or the bylaw, but somewhere it says that the Town Clerk's elected official salaries will be set by town meeting. So whatever, and it's each year, whatever is in there will be set by town meeting on that article. Right now, what the Finance Committee has in there does not reflect what we voted in the budget. So I think at some point in the future, you should address whether or not the Town Clerk is an appointed position or an elected position. I think you should address all of these things as they come up when the present Town Clerk leaves the office, but it is certainly something you have to figure out, but it's not correct the way that we do it now.
Agreed. Thank you. Jack, did you have anything?
I think that the Finance Committee has worked closely with Carol, and I thank you for that, and Chris. And we've, you know, talked a great deal about where can we cut and where can we stand up and say, "No, we think that money's really gotta be in there," and so on. I think that one of the discussions we had was around the Town Clerk and the, and the plans that over the last couple of years that were, were developed based on work that Dana spent a lot of time analyzing data in the, in the community and all that. I think that what we concluded was, and what town meeting voted last year, was a set of numbers, and Chris integrated them into his plan longer, for the longer-term salary. You know, I thought there would be some sense of continuity. What was I thinking? But, you know, the reality is, we had a process, we had interaction amongst various groups and people. You're, you're Selectman, and we voted to support the plan that was approved last year by, eventually by town meeting. And here it is, not, not a year later, we're talking about making maybe some changes already, big changes. And it's not, not particularly relevant to me whether that's Anita's role or, and the, and other people's role, because salary plan should be developed for the, for a person, for a role, not for a person. And what we've got here is a long-profiling Clerk, Town Clerk, who has been acknowledged, I think, by this group and others as, and doing a good job, and getting recognized for doing a good job. So we should, I don't think at this point, we spend a lot of time on talking about adjusting the pay of these people. That's already been voted on just a year ago. Just doesn't, it's not good practice, is the way I'd put it.
Thank you, Jack. Larry, did you have any?
I can't, I, I agree with it.
You do?
Say that louder.
Say that louder.
Just, just on. What hit was that?
Just on that, because it's an elected position, that the state law requires that you set the salary scale. At last year's town meeting, she, she's, the Town Clerk's position is the only one that's a full-time, the equivalent of a full-time employee. At last year's town meeting, we set the number, and I think we also said that she would be in the, considered as a non-union employee and assigned to a, a scale to be given. The concern that was raised last year, that was addressed last year in the motion, is if we had a different Town Clerk come in, and we had two candidates, and one had 10 years of experience and one had one year experience, you pay the same amount to that individual because you vote one number. So that was addressed by putting it, putting that position into the, the non-union scale, so that way there could be some sense. The other thing, in fairness to, to the incumbent, it would be, she would have to ask each year to be put in a separate schedule and just to have a number voted. And I know in my time that I've been here, we try to treat her as if she's, that position is the same. But having a little bit more sanity to the process of having that position on the schedule, having that slated as a non-union, does give us a point in which we can now rely upon to kinda have a, a natural progression through the system. So it has been addressed, to the point, it is in state law that we still have to have the specific number to indicate in that, because we have to comply with that state law. So we're trying to do two things that I think we did successfully last year. The only thing we're talking about now is the schedule that she was put on last year, gets, gets re, gets readjusted every year. And what does that readjustment look like, is the question.
Thank you, Chris. Don?
The only thing that comes to mind when you say that, though, is it's somewhat glib to say that because the table got changed. And to Jack's point, we hashed all of this out last year, but, and it really boiled down to more than just the, the non-union people. It really boiled down to relative values of all those positions, both the SEIU and the non-union ones. And to just pick, the Clerk's position, in terms of what they're required to do under law, is fairly significant. We had a long discussion about the fact that we had not addressed the salary for a long time, and we were trying to come up, well, town meeting had a discussion, and we were trying to come up with a mechanism, true. But now it seems like less than a year later, we're shearing it away, we're not going to, we, we may have made a mistake with the SEIU numbers. We've had discussions about that. But the question is, are we gonna take several of the crewmates on the ship and toss them overboard because we just, we did something in another area that we, that is a whoops? And I don't think it's fair. Ultimately, I'm pretty sure across the government that's spending tens of millions of dollars that we can come up with paper clips to come up with the $4,775. But each department, in this process, I mean, and I fully agreed with Michael. He wasn't part of the discussion, and I think it's really fair that we act as a whole for a budget. But in this process, we've tried really hard to look at the larger picture and what everything is worth relative to everything else, and we had said we should be questioning everything. But when we realized we needed money back, the departments were queried, Fire Department gave money back, DPW gave money back, the police gave money back, but nobody went to them initially and said, "Here's your number, you're going to get to this number, or I'm just gonna take it from you." And that's why I asked whether Anita was part of this process. Because whether it's a position or a person, I think it's not, it's not the right process to come up with a number and say, "We've gotta call you in now to let you know that we've made a decision, we're gonna lower it." That, that's not collaborative, and it's not really a budget process anymore.
Ed?
Last year, when we addressed the Town Clerk's salary, I think that we had universal agreement that although the Clerk's salary had gone up over the years, it had sort of fallen behind in its increase. It is, the, the positions, it is a department head, and in looking at our other department heads, all of which, for the most part, except, I believe, Link and the two chiefs.
The two deputy chiefs. The two deputy chiefs, the library director.
Are, are, um, in the, in the management union. And we looked to the management union to find a key on where to place the town clerk's salary. But we didn't put the town clerk in that union, or nor did we marry her increase, sorry, marry the position's increase to how the negotiations with that bargaining unit went. We placed that person, that position, in the non-union group. And I think, you know, if we're, you know, going to talk about fairness, then, you know, if we say the town clerk's position should follow the management union, then we ought to say, everybody in that non-union group ought to follow that. But, you know, we haven't, as a board, yet taken that up on what is going to be the increase rate for that.
Madam Chair, what we, what administration do is, we'll put together two schedules, one that does mirror the SEIU contract, and one that we recommend as something that may be a little bit more modest. So we can do the two, and then the board can vote, and we can make the necessary adjustments.
Thank you. Also, for clarification, back to Dana's comment about, you know, appointed or elected, we really actually can't do that because it's state law.
It's not. Well, I think two things. One, it's not on the warrant now.
Right, no, not, but I mean, moving forward.
Secondly, it would be a charter change. Certainly, it is eligible to be changed that if consideration wants to be given to make it from elected to appointed, but that's a process that's in and of itself.
Yeah, I'm just curious, relative to last statement from town administrator. I don't see the librarian, I don't see the police chief, I don't see the deputy chief, I don't see the fire chief. In the reduction column, I only see the town clerk's position in this reduction.
So back when we started the budget season, the Assistant Town Administrator sent out a non-union personnel salary schedule to all the departments, asked them to use that schedule to budget. And they did. That schedule essentially mirrors the schedule that we reverted back to a week ago. So they never had it in their budgets to begin with. They never had those significant increases in their budgets. The budget, you know, kind of reconciliation that came before you last, at your last meeting, had line items where we had to increase those budgets to reflect if we were, that we were supposed to be using this new schedule that was designed. So that's why you don't see them there any longer.
Okay, so they're reflecting the original.
That's correct.
In terms of this clarification, the reduction we're talking about, the $4,000-plus dollars, is not a reduction in existing salaries. It's reduction in the proposed increase in salaries going into 2020. So there's still an increase going forward, it's just not as much as what was listed, which changes my thought processes a little bit about this.
Yes, and to Carol's point, it's already in their budget.
We are taking something away.
That this was budgeted.
Just to clarify further, I think that, my understanding is that the, that the salary schedule that the Assistant Town Administrator sent out last fall had increased the town clerk, but nobody else, to, at those levels, nobody else at those levels, but I think it was an error.
Thank you. Ed?
Ed, just real quick, I want to just keep this as simple as possible. We submitted the budget, I'll speak on behalf of the Deputy Fire Chief, because he came out of a union and had to be put somewhere. So he was put on that schedule. We figured about a 4% increase. And then when this, this other schedule appeared, it was about 10%. And that's what happened specifically last week to our budget. It was increased. That was to adjust for that thing. So it's not necessarily, he's going to lose money, but he's not going to be wherever you end up being. And I will say, if you do want for one, you're going to do, should do for all. Don't take just one. I'm going to speak on behalf of the Deputy Fire Chief, that if we're going to retain the town clerk's big pay raise, she's deserving, so is the Deputy Fire Chief. So we started at four, we went up to about 10, and I think we're going back to four. So yeah, is there some sort of reduction? Sure, but we are at a 4% increase.
Right, thank you, thank you.
Chief?
And one question that was raised, your salary is handled by contract.
There were three or four of us that weren't considered at all. I know.
Come on, Jack.
I'm sitting here thinking about what's been going on the last, last year or two. We had a, FinCom had a mini task force to go off and take a look at salaries around the Cape for this kind of a role and similar towns and all that. Standard approach that the town here uses is to do something like that. And that led to a proposal, and that led to a vote by you all, and with the, then with the town meeting. And it all, it all went through. So there was a lot of oversight based on those votes, I think, okay, but I certainly hope. I don't, again, I don't think I understand why we're in this spot that we're in right now. Because there's, you've had votes, and you've approved things, and town meetings backed you up. And, you know, where are we going next? And why are we wandering away from what town meeting approved? I don't follow.
Actually, I was going to mirror what Jack just said in a slightly different way. The analysis that was done was both intra-government here. What are the things worth relative to each other in different departments? And intergovernmental by different towns. What are you paying people, the comparable thing? The problem is, is that the discussion we're having right now completely ignores the, what's the relative value within the government question? Because if we start going down this road, you're taking these people over here, and you're saying, well, you're not in the union, these guys are going to get an increase because that's what we contracted to do. And you're blowing out of the water the relative figures that we worked for quite some time to develop about what's this person, this position worth relative to that position, but we're taking half of that off the table because we can't do anything about the contract. And you're telling the other half of these people, last year, when we came up with these schedules and we came up with all of these interrelated numbers, we didn't really mean it. So we're going to start over again. So I agree with Jack. I don't understand, there are places that we can come up with this kind of money that are real places. And I'd like to see us go after them, which is kind of what I'm thinking Michael's going to be talking about. Go after real money somewhere else, because this is kind of an arbitrary thing that's only going to cause us heartburn later on.
Ed?
But to follow the police chief, the fire chief's comment, is if we're going to do it for one, we do it for all, and it's not just $4,000. It is probably 15? Or 18?
Probably in that neighborhood, a higher.
And we didn't, at town meeting last year, we used the management salary schedule to determine a position for the town clerk department head to fall into. But we didn't tie her future, tie that position's future raises to that group. We placed that position in the non-union salary schedule with the other non-union employees, and that salary increases is tied to that group.
So, yeah, just the non-union schedule will present two of them. And just to the chief's point, everyone's on that schedule that's non-union would be adjusted accordingly. So if it's a 4% across the board, then it's 4%. If it's 8%, then it's 8% across the board. But everyone that's in the non-union category would be treated equitably in that.
Thank you.
You still have a motion, though?
Oh, sorry.
There's no motion.
No motion.
Where's the motion?
We voted to reconsider.
Yeah, to reconsider.
Yeah, but-
That's all we had.
If I could ask, after we made that motion, I started asking a question, and then it sort of went. My question is, in this document, do the numbers that you proposed on the first page, are they mirroring the votes the Finance Committee did?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
That's what we wanted to try to do, at least give one place.
What people were saying, I couldn't figure out which way.
So we're reconciling at the highest level right now.
Somehow I feel there's more to it than just this, that you voted.
So we're going to bring this one, town operating budget, next week with the two?
The FinCom numbers will go into the book because they have been voted. I think that really the question for the selectmen, it is your warrant, and we can put in the original numbers, and then in the FinCom motion, put in the revised numbers. Or if the board wants to vote the same numbers that FinCom voted, part of tonight is to do a reconciliation of where there's differences and where there's similarities on the articles. Then if the board's okay with it, we will update the numbers to go into the book. That doesn't mean that you can't make any additional tweaks that would just be a motion at town meeting to make those adjustments.
In that regard, I would move that we accept these, this budget, operating budget, because it's closer to where we think we'll be at the end than what was originally proposed to us. Acknowledging that we'll probably have some amendments as we go forward.
So it's been moved in seconded. So I'm going to voice my objection to this budget. It's a, you know, the system is not working. We're at a town budget increase of 36% over six years, roughly. And Don's putting his thumb up, so I'll just use it roughly. I find it hard to believe that we can't come up with a half a percent in reductions. We didn't even come up with a half a percent in reductions. The Board of Selectmen's budget message, going back four years, are the only budget messages I looked at, were for 2.5% plus a percentage of the growth, and the number that was always talked about was 3.25%. We're consistently hit with 7% increases, consistently hit. We owe it to the taxpayers to pay more attention. Two years ago, the budget message said 2.5% plus a growth, and to go to 2% for this year. And that was voted, voted by the board then. And then it was to be followed by zero-based budgeting, starting from scratch. And again, I strongly object to this budget, based on its increase and based on the forever increases that we seem to be coming up with. And to think that we can't find a half a percent decrease in a budget that's gone up over 36% and we continue to go back to the taxpayers is wrong.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm basically in agreement with that, but my motion was to put this in the warrant article, and I'm hoping we don't give up on the other stuff.
This is a motion to support.
To support, but we can amend it.
We've already put it, we've already put-
Well, I understand, yeah, you're right.
This is a motion to support, just to be clear.
You're right.
Don?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And to that point, I'd have a tough time at this juncture, especially hearing what Michael has to say, supporting it without us digging deeper, because it just seems to me, and this is why I voted against the rooms tax increase this past year. If that, if we had a plan, and it was targeted the way the legislative discussion had it, that it would be targeted to reducing the overall burden for taxpayers, perhaps tax burden, borrowing burden, then I would have been okay with that. But it seemed like it was coming in the door and was going out as fast as it came in, and it was being allocated in an operating budget. And to Michael's point, we've got to come to, so, the number was understated by Michael's, 37.8% over five years. It's kind of difficult to maintain that kind of structure in a prop 2.5 budget, unless you're coming up with all kinds of outside ancillary income that you're plowing into the bucket to expend. It's especially given where we are with the borrowings. I mean, let's say Lower County Road does pass. If he makes the argument and it does pass, that's added on to not just what we voted before, but what hasn't been billed before. The tech school and the $24 million for the seoring is not part of anybody's tax bill right now. They're going to have a real tax hangover when that happens, and they realize they voted to increase other things. There's someplace, somewhere, we got to create a line in the sand where we're not willing to go beyond, at least temporarily, to, for us to be able to absorb the kinds of outlays that we're going to have to do with the seoring, never mind anything else that we need.
Chris?
So, Madam Chair, just on the budget, just to kind of make a little bit of a point here. You know, I think that the operating budget, generally with the contract increases and so on, we have been living within proposition 2.5. There has not been a general override. Administration, and nor do I think the Board of Selectmen, can ignore that in the past, when the voters of the town were asked, I don't think anyone wanted to sign up to redo Three Harbors, to have to redo the school, build a new school at the Montemoy, or to have the tech school need to be replaced. You know, lion's share of the increase in that 7% for this year is related to debt that goes to projects that are for things that haven't been kept up to date over 30 to 40 years. And it's not unusual for an organization to get into a cycle where things need to be replaced. And unfortunately, as a community, we're in a cycle that things need to be replaced. We have a challenge on the sewers, that we have to build sewers. And, you know, I applaud this board, that the board could say, we're not going to do anything with sewers, and leave people to their own devices. And that would be probably double the amount of money. If you want to bankrupt people, that's probably a great way to do it. So by having government proactively get involved, proactively partner with other towns, and create a funding plan that is actually more sustainable than individuals trying to go it alone, I think makes a whole lot of sense. Is 7% high? Yes. Are the challenges that the towns faces significant? Yes. And we do have a chart that shows, with all in, in a worst-case scenario, it goes up, I think it was $600, and then with the, some of the savings that we've had through different regional efforts, it's $550. So to try to create a manageable number for the, really, the monumental task that this town is facing to address all those needs, I think that the board has done a good job of trying to mitigate those costs for residents, instead of just ignoring them and having be even more of a burden to individual residents.
Thank you, Chris. So we can't-
Certainly appreciate the town administrator talking about the debt service, because debt service is a big driving factor. It's not an unknown, though. And to talk about wastewater and continue to throw wastewater as the, this is, this is why, it's not why. The Board of Selectmen needs to stop putting these projects forward. And again, we voted for 4-1 or 3-2 to put Lower County Road on. It's another project, and we haven't seen the debt from the last couple that we've picked. And when you have 400 people on average going to town meeting, 650 last year, and I think wastewater was a big driver in that, because it had to pass. When these projects go before town meeting, the groups of these voters are going to town meeting and voting them through. But I don't see how a 7% increase, and it's year after year, is sustainable. And somebody said after two meetings ago, we've had this same conversation every year when we sit at this table. Well, we have, but why do we put a budget message in there? And there has to be a point when, when we realize that the budgets aren't sustainable. And quite honestly, I always hear that, I've gone back, I've looked at other towns. I always hear budget cuts, and then we talk about, administrators have a tendency to talk about cutting places like public safety, and Council on Aging is $9,000, which is back in, thank you. But that's why we go to zero-based budgeting, and that's why other towns look at zero-based budgeting. Has our finance director been, looked at the budget? Has she gone through everybody's budget and looked? Has there been any instruction? Has there been any instruction to find five percent that doesn't make everyone feel pain? Has that exercise happened? It's always getting rid of teachers, getting rid of firefighters, police officers, or taking money out of their budgets. And, Chris, it doesn't matter how you respond at this point, I don't buy it. And I don't buy it, and I'm not selling it to the public, with another seven percent increase this year with these cuts.
Chris?
I do want to say, Madam Chair, believe it or not, this could be a heck of a lot worse. I actually, in every year that I've been here, from the requests that have been submitted, I've cut at least one million dollars before it comes before you. And I do that, Carol and I meet with every department, and before Carol, the other finance directors, and we go through the budget to narrow it down and to streamline it. And that, at least a million dollars every year I've been here, from what has been submitted to what ultimately gets to you, has been already been adjusted. So, you know, when we ask about narrowing it even more, it's not narrowing it based upon, and I hate to say the wish list, but the initial needs list, it's been already gone through and narrowed by a million dollars. And that's every year that I've been here, we make cuts in that range.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, and, look, none of it's easy for any of us to have to deal with the increases in the budget year after year. I mean, I also go back to a couple of things that we've had in front of us, and they weren't big-money items, but, you know, we take, we have to take some responsibility for it, to your point, of things we're voting for, but also, you know, we had to have two go-arounds with the building inspector to increase fees, and it really passed on to, you know, people building homes, not to all the taxpayers in town. And then, you know, the warrant article that, I mean, three hundred and fifty thousand was in the budget for that, and I'm not in favor of the overall Airbnb bill at all. I think I was the only person who voted against it. And then my only point on that was that, you know, it should have gone to town meeting, because that was an increase in funds that the taxpayers weren't gonna pay. That was money coming into the town that we chose not to put on the warrant and let the taxpayers decide if they wanted that money. And I understand that it would affect technically the businesses, but that's money we turned away. So as much as we have to be responsible about what we're voting, we also have to be responsible for monies we're missing out on, so. Michael?
Just if I may on that, we didn't vote, we didn't vote to two percent. But what's important, because I've followed the debates on this, we went from four percent to twelve point four-five percent to these business owners, taxpayers.
State-regulated.
Taxpayers. We went, we went, fine, but they took a four percent to twelve point four-five percent increase. And all, and that's, so, that's an important note. Yes, we didn't vote to spend the money, that's yesterday.
No, and that money isn't paid by those business owners, it's paid by the people renting those rooms, staying at those hotels, et cetera. So I'm just clarifying the point, that it's not, it's not the business people or the taxpayers paying that, it's the people coming into town. So I think obviously we should go on, you know, you're looking for clarification.
Do you have a motion and a second on the budget?
Right, so I think we don't need to continue to discuss it. Want to take a vote? Unless you have more.
No, because I'm in agreement with that, we have to stop this process. I don't know how we, seven percent's not sustainable. I just don't know how we do it at this late stage and make it happen. You know, if we could come back and say, to Michael's point, you know, by next week, kind of by one percent, I'd be all for that. I do think, though, that we're not doing our job. We're not going back and really doing the zero-based budgeting and trying to get after these. And we should, we talked about it, and it's frustrating, I share Michael's point, frustrating to argue this every year and not, and still come up with such a huge increase every year. It's not, it's driving people out of town.
Ed, did you have something? So, I'm gonna call the vote. All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
So, Article five.
What was the total on that? I'm sorry.
Three and two.
In favor of.
Three and two opposed. Article five, Montemoy School Budget.
The Montemoy budget does reflect the budget cuts that they made at the previous presentation, so the total is twenty-six million, six hundred and forty-three, four-one-five. And that is a number that we vote the bottom on.
We make a motion, we approve Article five, Montemoy School Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Oh, oh, sorry, somebody's gonna do a.
Oh, the reconsideration, sorry.
We reconsidered the past action.
Oh, okay, second.
Second, moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
No.
What?
Who's seconded?
Larry seconded it. So it's moved and seconded, no other, no other discussion. So now we'll go on to your.
Yeah, move that we approve Article five, Montemoy Regional School Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes.
Oh, Don?
This is kind of a riff on Michael's past discussion. Whenever you're talking about a school, it has a tendency to feel like you're pulling the wings off of butterflies at night for your enjoyment. So with that context, I have a kid in the school system, I value the school system, and that's one reason I asked for the data, which I never received, about where their overhead was, across all schools, and also collaterally, just the central office staff, both by FTE and by cash, where the money was going. Just last year, I mean, this is just a pet peeve of mine. Last year, they hired somebody at about eighty grand, and then that's plus benefits as an information specialist for the central office. When everybody's complaining about the staffing levels at the school and whether we're giving the kids the right education and whether we can support them in a classroom, we don't have an information specialist that can push data out on Facebook and other things. And while it's a nice thing to have, it's still kind of pricey when we were casting about to try to find money, which we can't tell them what to do. But it just doesn't feel right, and I never, we were all sitting here. I asked a specific question, and I asked it twice now. It was, where's the overhead across all your schools, which would count the offices for the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools, and the central office, for both FTE, what's, over a five-year period, how's that increased, by FTE, by cash? And also, as a subset of that, your central office expenditures? Because those expenditures don't translate into a kid reading better, a kid writing better, a kid doing math better, getting language help. And that would have been a central point to me. And it's, and I know I voted to support this the last time around, but I'm not gonna this time, because honestly, it's, how do we dispose of our duties if we can't get answers from stuff that are fairly elemental? This has been going on for six or seven weeks, as I recall, and we still don't have the answer, and now we're voting.
So I just want clarification on that, because we did vote this last week.
We did.
And the other thing is that, in terms of the numbers, and I too wanted those numbers, so I'm not questioning you on that. But I will say this, we did track through that conversation, and they did explain where FTEs were moved, so they weren't added.
But not in the aggregate. That's what I was looking for, is like, you can shift things around, but tell me how much they've increased overall. It seems like a shell game. It wouldn't seem like a shell game if they'd responded. And twice I requested, and twice I never got anything. The board never got anything.
I think that, again, I'm just clarifying, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it or in favor, but I am just saying, in fairness to them, when we did ask why you have this at the elementary, this at the middle, and this at the high school, they did indicate this person moved here, we didn't add. They did say that, and they did say it was, I think it was another fifty thousand for that position that you're referencing, that's at eighty thousand, because that employee was at either thirty or forty. So it was either an additional forty or an additional fifty to that position. So they did answer some of those questions in all fairness. They did talk about the FTEs and where they went and where they did not add, but they moved. That's the way I recall it. Maybe I'm wrong, but I do think they tried to, because then they said they would come back with the other additional specifics you had asked. And to your point, they haven't, so. Michael?
So I'm slightly different than Don on this one, shocking, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to support this budget. And I've thought about this long and hard. I believe that the superintendent, through his subgroup, did a good job this year coming in at one point nine percent. And that was before the hundred thousand in budget cuts that they found in transportation and two things that they didn't need. So I think they were thoughtful about the cuts they made. I don't believe that they have looked at all of their programs, and I think that there's a long way for them to go to get their budget sustainable. But this is year six that I've been talking about the budgets anyway, or at least listening to them say, "One more year, one more year." The assessment that Howard is getting this year is because of the state, and that was a huge budget driver for the school. And the, not one time, but the special needs, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, was something that wasn't controllable. I do believe that they have some more money in E and D, and if they wanted to do, do right by the town, I think that they should get into their excess and deficiency a little bit more. And I believe Mr. DeCosta had mentioned that one, like, this one-time special circumstance is why they have that fund. But I do believe that they have given me the answers I asked for. Looking at the out-years on transportation, looks like our transportation costs are gonna go down. And I think they at least made an effort this year to come in, and I think those two driving factors didn't allow them to. Thirty-three percent in six years, this was a new regional school, there was a lot of unknowns. I think that there was a lot of things that weren't disclosed when we regionalized, and I think that there was a lot of surprises, and some not surprises, that we paid for after the fact. But I feel like they're getting there and that they did their job this year on budget cuts.
Thank you, Michael. Any other discussion?
No, I think, Michael, are you ready to make a motion again?
I already did, it's already seconded.
No, that was reconsider, right?
Nope.
No, made a motion to support. Made a motion to, we have a motion to support.
Mark me up.
So it's been seconded, we've just discussed, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Where am I?
Article twenty, Lower County Road.
Article twenty, Lower County Road. We don't really need to, are we gonna talk about this again? I don't think we need any, do we need any more discussion on it? Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move ahead, I move we support Article twenty, Lower County Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Just quick discussion, if I may.
Michael?
I'm not gonna support this for the reasons outlined. When we talked about the town operating budget, we continue to do this, we continue to pile on capital projects, and at some point, the word "no" has to be used. And we have come a long way, harbor, cultural center, fire department, wastewater. We've come a long way in six years, and I think it's time that we put the brakes on and say no for a few years, and let the taxes come down, and be done with the spending. And as Chris has pointed out, the cost of debt is what's driving his budgets up, or a good portion of his budgets up. But we keep putting them on, and they keep getting approved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Article thirty-one, Cemetery Rules and Regulations. Do we need?
Planning Board?
Has this one been vetted out?
The rules and regulations, cemetery.
So, FinCom, Robin Kelly Cemetery Administrator. So FinCom did do an amendment to it, and they wanted to take out the January thirty-first date for removing of the Christmas/holiday decorations. I'll let Dana.
Yes, we basically wanted to do the, two of the three things that they were looking for. We wanted to change the address, and we also wanted to take out the Howard Center Cemetery. And, you know, as far as that being on the list, so we approved that. There was also in item number two, internments in their list of things. They have internment directions on the Howard Center Cemetery, which they just took off the list. So we thought that those should come out as well. So our motion will take that out as well. And then, in a compromise, we found a lot of other areas of their rules that just need to be fixed. And we're gonna ask them to go back and fix those and bring back a better rules package. As we have said from the very beginning, that we think that there can be a kinder and gentler approach to this. We think they need to do more education, there should be some signage, like we have at the beaches. There's a lot of problems with some of these rules. And so, on the new rules that they were adding, the discussion went on, I think Ed was there for quite a bit, about whether holiday includes all of the holidays, whether we should change that to holidays, and then what are the terms? In terms of timing, you know, how long can you leave a pumpkin next to a grave, those kind of things. It just got too common, so we took all the new rules that they're trying to put in, and this one out. We're fixing the Howard Center problem, we're fixing the address problem, and we're asking them to come back with a rules package that makes sense. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed. If you look at just number two as an example, "No vehicles shall be operated in any part of the cemeteries, no vehicles shall be operated in any part of the cemeteries, and yet speeds no faster than ten miles an hour." So if you're not gonna have any vehicles, you shouldn't, if you're gonna break the law and bring a vehicle in, you gotta go ten miles an hour.
So your point, though, is to make those changes the following year, not for this year.
It's bylaw, come to and fix it, it was a compromised position.
And they'll come back next year when they're revised.
That's our plan, and that's what we suggest, and that's what will be in our motion.
So the only concern that we had was, and it is mostly Christmas decorations. I know that it's supposed to be Christmas/holiday now, but a lot of the Christmas decorations have fake berries on them and stuff like that, with the birds were eating them, and they got, a lot of them got sick. So, and some of the decorations blow into the ponds and blow into the wetlands that we have that surround Island Pond in particular. And Amy Yuzelsky was concerned about those issues. I do, if we do change it from Christmas to holiday, then it does address what Dana is saying, that what holiday are you talking about? So unless it says Christmas, December, holiday, or whatever, it is gonna be concerning to some people.
And just as part of the education process, there are anchoring devices, there are educational things that you can go through to make it so that they get their desired results of not having things blow around. You can buy ten anchors for a dollar to hold those things in place. You can buy a package of twist ties that are this long to hold those things in place. There are lots of things they can do. They just need to educate it and make the things available. We have mitts available for people that we want to pick up after their dogs. We can help steer the conversation as to what we want for the final results without making a bunch of just hard-fast, doubt-shelled rules.
Ed?
And the problem, though, with holidays is, if you, as it reads now, it's basically referring to the Christmas holiday, and it gives January thirty-first or thirtieth as the deadline to have things removed. That'd be fine for Christmas, maybe okay for Thanksgiving and Halloween, but, I mean, Valentine's Day, it means, those decorations get to stay up for a month and, eleven and a half months. So if you're gonna change it, it's a little bit more complicated than just changing the title.
Just a quick one, did it also recommend, relative to the vehicle part, I bet you that we probably want to include vehicles, because it would be awfully difficult to walk into the cemetery.
So that, it used to say, except on paved, it used to say, traveling only on paved roadways. And actually, at one of the town meetings, I think it was in two thousand and six, somebody moved from the floor to remove pave from the title of that. That's how that got changed, and it's been voted on three times at town meeting to approve it. to approve it exactly the language it's been, because some of the roads are not paved but are dirt, paved pathways.
I get it, except that I'd have to start out the night before for the Veterans Day celebration if there were no vehicles allowed.
So I'm confused on what we're supposed to vote on, quite honestly. I don't have to agree with Finance Committee.
Right.
And I don't think the Board of Selectmen has to agree with Finance Committee. You have a Cemetery Commission and you're the Cemetery Director.
Right.
But if it's not right, it's not right, and I think I'm hearing you say it's not right, too. So what are we actually voting on? Can I get something that is crystal clear that says what we're gonna vote on?
So we, you're gonna vote on, we're gonna remove the Howard Center Cemetery, and we're going to change the address of the Cemetery Office from the DPW over to the Community Center. And we're also gonna remove under markers number two B, the recommendations for the lot size for the Howard Center Cemetery.
So for this year, we're doing those three. Next year, you're gonna come back with revised regulations?
Yes.
And you're comfortable with that?
I am comfortable with that after hearing from Dana and a couple other people that we need to rework it. I did go over, the Barnstable has a very detailed rules and regulations for all the different ones, and, and theirs was probably much better written than ours. So after reading theirs, I think it, it actually is a good recommendation.
Okay. Michael?
Move that we approve Article thirty-one, Cemetery Rules and Regulations as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Dana?
I just, she didn't mention the, the, the removing of the new items under ten, eleven, and twelve, and, and our motion will include that. And I just wanted to be clear on it. The last sentence in ten, it's, it's actually written up in, in what your packet tonight, but ten, the last sentence, eleven and twelve.
Ten is, at the end of the, at, at the end of ten says, "January thirty-first, decorations removed."
The new bold, the new bold printed.
So to, to be clear, you're gonna take out, "All Christmas decorations must be removed by January thirty-first. Anything left on the grave will be removed by the Cemetery Personnel." Eleven, items left at or on the lots after burial will be removed after one week. And twelve, the above rules will be strictly enforced.
Correct.
Those are coming out.
And then it says to read number, what follows that.
Accordingly.
Right.
And you're comfortable with those as well?
I am. I think that we, we can reword them, and they will come out clearer, so we don't have to come back next year and do it again anyways.
Okay. My, my, my point is that we don't have to agree with them. So if you're not in agreement, I'd rather hear.
I know, and, and we are gonna do some public outreach. It's, believe it or not, it's not the people who live here year-round that leave the, the decorations up, it's the people who only come to the graves twice a year. So those are the people who leave the stuff up and then come in the summertime and expect their Christmas decorations to still be there.
Jack?
We had a very good discussion with Robin, went very well. I left the room convinced that she was satisfied, and I think she would've told me otherwise.
Right.
At this point, right?
She just did, she just said she saw.
We'll, we'll do your work for you.
So the motion's been moved and seconded. I know, I said.
And I have nothing to say.
I said it's been moved and seconded, there's no further discussion, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
Can we group?
Article twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, we've previously voted.
Yeah, why are they on?
So Article twenty-six, we have not.
I think the only reason why it's on is, there may have been a little clarification issue. You had asked for an explanation.
On Article twenty-six.
Yeah, and we wound up getting explanations on all of them.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. So just twenty-six, yeah, okay.
But the one you needed an explanation on most was twenty-six.
Twenty-six, right, "Special provisions for lifting existing structure to new and appropriate elevations."
Right. I move that we reconsider our previous vote.
You don't have.
We didn't have one, so you don't have to reconsider a thing.
Article twenty-six, we need to vote.
I asked.
We didn't do one of those pending further.
No, I think we said, we, we said we'd bring it back.
Zip on to twenty-six.
So did, did Julie, I know you were the one that wanted the clarification, did you get it? So I move that we approve Article twenty-six, "Special provisions for lifting existing structures to new and appropriate elevations."
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the joint budget article meetings with Selectmen and Finance Committee reconciliation.
Yeah, I don't, I'll kinda defer to Dana, he's been keeping tabs. I don't, I think that for the most part, there's a lot of uniformity, and nothing comes to my mind immediately that there's a difference between the two boards.
Dana?
I just think on the only one that, that, I know it's one that we haven't voted yet. We agree on Article fifty-seven, which is the rescind the pet burial grounds. We agreed that we do not support that. The complete, the structural, the, the establish the pet burial grounds revolving funds, we do agree on that. The complete the construction, the Finance Committee is having a problem with the funding portion of that and where it's coming from. We just think, we haven't taken a position on it, but in our discussions, we were saying that in what order you do this in makes a difference. Are you gonna pay back the seventy thousand that was already spent first? Then you're gonna do sixty thousand to improvements? And while this is going on, you still have to do all the burials that are gonna fund all of this stuff. It seems like the things that, to finish that cemetery, isn't gonna happen until a year or two from now, I don't know, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of profit seems like a very high number to go back into it. So the Finance Committee was having trouble with that one. We didn't come to any conclusion, I think at one point, there was a four to four tie, and we needed to get more membership to break the tie. We haven't had that yet, but we haven't figured that one out yet, and may not figure it out until after we get done. But we're struggling with how this thing is going to unwrap. We don't wanna be a year from now in the same boat that we were this time, where we've deficit-spent some money to finish that cemetery when it wasn't there. I don't wanna be in that position, I don't think the Finance Committee wants to be in that position. We wanna, we wanna make sure that the money's there to finish it. So my recommendation was some available funds to do that part, and then pay that back over time. But the committee has not agreed to anything yet, we're stumped on that one. Right?
Ed?
Yeah. Your question about having to pay for, for burials, fund burials, the person, the pet owner funds the burials. There's no, no cost to town, because the town employees don't do it, just like they don't do it in the cemetery. You hire a burial company to do it.
So it's all profit, everything? I mean, what are you saying?
Robin?
So we're not gonna open up anything?
So.
We don't open up.
Where's a hundred and thirty-one thousand?
I, I will say, in all fairness to Robin, she did go through that painfully.
Yeah.
I remember all of it.
So, um, what happens is when somebody purchases a lot, eh, they pay a hundred dollars for me to purchase a lot, or a hundred and fifty, depending on what lot size they choose. And then, if, when they go to have an interment of their pet, a lot of people will buy it in advance. We do have a lot of people who already have pets that are deceased at this point and already cremated, ready to go in. At that point, I will just be flagging where those graves are gonna be going, and subcontractors dig the graves. Our guys don't dig any graves. So all of the, the money that will be coming in will be going into the revolving account if it gets established. It will, nothing will be coming from the town.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Madam Chair, one of the things we were trying to reconcile, and I don't know if we've fully reconciled it yet, but the intent, I believe, would be, at least from an administration standpoint, that it probably makes sense to finish the project, so that way it's, makes it easier to market and sell the, the lots. So that the first priority for money going in would go to finishing the, the project if the fund is created. And then as a secondary part, then we would repay the town, the money that the town had come up with out of taxpayer money, if you would, from different departments to cover the seventy thousand dollar shortfall. So I think the primary would be to, to finish the, the project, so we have it viable. And then, once that funding is secured and, and paid, then we would then proceed to reimburse the town on a, as available needed.
Thank you.
I think what we're trying to, to deal with here is a cash flow issue. And, and we just don't want to start, start on spending the fifty, the sixty, and the seventy. First of all, we won't do it in advance. The second thing is, we wouldn't think. Thank you, Chris. At the same time, we, we're clear that all that money's not gonna come in at once. So, you know, you got a chunk of money hurtling toward you, but it's not yours yet, you can't do anything with it. And the pets are gonna come, and we don't wanna have that get out of sync. And we wanna get the money, know the money's gonna be there, so we can give Robin the go-ahead at some point. We don't wanna have it end up being a big mystery, where's the money gonna come from at the last minute.
Dana?
Thank you.
Yeah, that was suggested by our conversation, and this is one unrelated conversation, but having, we talked about rules a few minutes ago. It's been opined by Town Council that this is a burial ground, it's not a cemetery. And I'm just wondering if the cemetery rules that we have in the bylaw also covers a pet burial ground? I'm just, if those are the rules of the, there should be.
No. They do not. Dana, we, I actually got legal opinion on that. They do, we do not, but they're totally separate.
So there's no bylaw governing the rules of that cemetery? It might be something you look forward to.
Good point.
Later down the road.
It's a little late for this year.
Just, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I, I do think just to that, you know, if, if we can, hopefully we don't have to have a requirement to go to town meeting for that, but certainly the Cemetery Commission, you know, they have charged already with that as a burial ground for pets. So they certainly have already the legal authority to, to go and do that. This is just the funding source. But I don't see why they couldn't do rules and regs on their own to do, or have the, you know, Selectmen weigh in.
Hold on, Ed?
Yeah, I mean, the Youth and Rec Commission do the beach rules on their, through a process that's separate and apart from having to go to town meeting.
I understand that, I'm just suggesting that where the cemetery rules themselves are part of the town's bylaw, and seeing how much trouble that those are having, maybe you might ask to be involved in whatever they do for regs in some fashion. You might wanna.
Have a draft, right.
Have some sort of approval process yourselves for that. That's just a future, whatever you wanna do is fine, but.
Okay, thank you.
You should look at them.
And to that point, the current regulations actually prohibit anything other than human burials. If, if you've gotta go to town meeting for the one set, and you're, and they're in the bylaws, what, what would make you think that this is analogous to anything other than the cemetery rules? That where you'd have to go to town meeting and amend them?
Cause they're separate.
They're separate, yeah.
Oh, but you can't have it both ways. One, one minute you're saying you voted for the Cemetery Commission to take up jurisdiction, but they can't jurisdictionally act as the Cemetery Commission unless you change the rules that allow them to do that.
Yeah, it's not.
Michael?
Are we gonna allow holiday decorations?
Only if they turn it down, I'll personally pay for them.
I didn't mean to interrupt your budget discussion, but.
You did.
Well, I think this part was the reconciliation, if that's the only one that.
That's only one, yes, we can move on.
Okay.
We're good.
Uh, well, I guess I would, I would ask on the, on the money part of that, have we?
Have a process?
Got into that? Well, the, the recommendation from administration is, you know, I don't see why the Selectmen couldn't vote favorably, favorably. The only question is on the money, and certainly, and as a revolving account, we can't spend it until it comes in. I think if town meeting votes it, and then the money becomes available July one, there's no reason why we can't start selling lots and collecting money, once we have a, a legal vehicle to put it into. So we could start collecting money right after town meeting and start building up. The only point I'm making is that you probably can take that sixty thousand dollars, maybe do the, the concrete work, not break it up as a project, to have it overall, but then fund it as, as we go, so that way you can make it viable quicker to start having people be able to put their, their pets in the, in the burial ground.
Dana?
My worry was that that's, what, six hundred, at a hundred dollars a pet, that's sixty thousand dollars. Is a lot of pets committed to this project before you have enough money? And I just think you're gonna lose an entire season trying to get it fixed up and cleaned up and grassed up prior to next fall. I mean, how long's it gonna take to get that many pets committed? Especially if there's a big drawn-out process at town meeting where, where a lot of people are upset with the whole project to begin with. I, I just wonder, at what point do we reach, is that six hundred pets? Am I doing the math right? It's a hundred dollars a pet? And then, and then you gotta pay back the seventy thousand, which is another seven hundred pets. I don't know what budgets the maintenance of this place gets, but, you know, there's money involved.
Right.
Lots of pets.
And, and also, you know, does that go on for an endless amount of time? Or do you put a certain restriction on in terms of how, I mean, I know it's kind of an unfair thing to say when you don't even, it's not even up and running yet, but, I mean, do you say, should be repaid within a year or two years?
I thought was that there should be some available funds committed to finishing it. That's all I said to the Finance Committee all the way through this, is finish the project, make the place look right.
Yeah, I agree.
Right up front. And pay that back over time, but you would have the time to do that. That was my thought, there's enough free cash available to do that. That was my only, but again, the Finance Committee could not come up with the end to that.
But we will.
We didn't get.
Well, we also don't have an article to do that.
That's what I was saying.
So, I mean, it's, it's a moot point.
I've been thinking about this for months.
Well, just, just to that, when we construct all these articles for Article fifty-nine, for funding the project at a hundred and thirty-one, it does say to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow.
Right.
So theoretically, it is possible to fund it from free cash and then reimburse the full hundred and thirty at the end of it. That is, because the way we construct all the articles, we have those three options in there. We would have to identify the, the free cash.
Oh, we got it, right, okay.
Another kind of fish.
Is everybody satisfied, can we go to the town administrator's report?
Yeah, we'll get out of the way.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll make this, uh, make this kinda.
Those troublesome people.
For old time's sake, you could stay, Dana.
So, Madam Chair, just a reminder for all board members, as well as, I have to do this myself, but April is the, the deadline for doing the online ethics test. So we did send out the, are you familiar with the policy and signing off on the policy? But this does have a requirement that you go online, take the test, and then get the certificate.
Like all of us.
And drop it off, all of us, including me, I haven't, I haven't sat down to do it yet. But it is a requirement of law, so I told the town clerk I would pass that along to.
Remind us where the, what's the website addresses on that?
I'll send it out in the.
For Julie's identification, we're gonna start imposing penalties by June.
The other one is just, I did receive, and I realize we didn't make it into the packet, but health insurance for retirees. We did, the Board of Selectmen voted the rule probably about a year, year and a half ago, that there was an issue in which we had people that indicated a interest in retiring. They didn't retire, or they, they did retire, but they didn't take health insurance. And they would go down to, you know, Florida, what have you, and they would come back ten years later and say, "Oh, I want my health insurance now." So the Board of Selectmen created a policy as part of our health insurance product that if you retire from the town and you seek eligibility for the health insurance to continue on the town's rolls, that you have to decide within a year to elect to take that or not. I will dig that up, the policy up, I know a, a question had come up in regards to that. But that was what was presented to the, to the Selectmen.
If I may, I'd like to reopen that conversation, because I believe it is May first, Chris, that they have until, until they have to decide?
It's one year from retirement.
One year from retirement. So I, I was.
It was a floating, I think initially, to your point, I think when we initially put it in, we did give people maybe a deadline of.
We gave them a year. Anyone that previous, we gave them a year to. Anyone that previous, we gave them a year to decide.
Previously.
So my question is, and I was approached by a recently retired firefighter. His spouse has health insurance for five years. In five years, her health insurance goes away when she retires. So in five years, he wants to get back on the town's policy. So I guess my question is, how does it make sense to the town of Howard to pay $600 a month for his policy for five years? And him to pay $200 a month for his policy for five years to secure that he gets it? And what is the benefit to the town to do that? Why don't we have special circumstances?
That's a good question. I think the concern that was raised by the treasurer in this case looking at it is we would have people that after 10 years or 15 years would come back and all of a sudden say to her, I want retirement, you know, I want health insurance. So it was creating budget uncertainty. So this was the approach to take to how to create that more budget certainty. But we did do that as a policy. If the board wanted to relook at that, you could certainly relook at that. I don't disagree that there probably are circumstances like that, that we wouldn't want to incur those additional costs. But also to have five or six people join in the span of a year, you know, we don't always budget. We try to assume how many people are going to join. But this was trying to have people be more definitive. It's not unusual, particularly in towns that have done those rules, to have some kind of sign up by a certain date.
So I guess the question is to the board, if you heard what I was saying, there's a gentleman that is covered for five years, or is covered five years and he's not going to be. His option is going to be to sign on now at a cost to the town of $600 a month, and a cost to him of $200. Or do we want to revisit special circumstances in this policy to avoid us having to do it? Because he's going to do it. And he claims that there's several other people that are going to do it as well.
I mean, I see both sides of that. I just think it's like to that, I think it's silly to have to pay $600 a month for somebody who's not even going to be using that insurance. Same token, how do you prepare for knowing when those people are going to return if they do all come back at one, in one year? I mean, I know the likelihood is, you know, whatever, but you're still trying to figure out a budget.
I know, but you know, if these individuals are in a situation where they expect, you know, it's, nothing's for sure, but if they expect the other spouse is going to retire in five years, then in their departure agreement, we can.
Do it on a case-by-case basis, maybe?
Yeah, I agree. If the days come back.
So I'm going to ask that we bring this back for a lengthy conversation because that is an amendment to a policy we voted. So, Chris, can we bring this back before?
Yeah, we'll dig up the policy and.
And I would ask that we do that soon because I think his deadline's coming up.
I do have just a couple other things that will be done. Sorry. Just on the search, we have several positions that we're seeking to fill. So I think we've had some real success in the recruitment. So I am looking at potentially bringing forward three names next week for the boards to confirm. We do have the position of Assistant Town Administrator. I'm close on that. Town Engineer and Secretary for Sandy as Sandy retires. So we've had a pretty good interest in each of these positions. And then lastly, we have also concluded, at least administratively, the process on the sewer project manager. So we will have a recommendation for that at next week's meeting as well. We had two candidates or two firms that applied, so we will have a recommendation on that for the next meeting. And that concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Tom, Selectmen's report?
I want to report, I have nothing to say.
Wow, it's shocking.
Can I write that down?
So Michael's going to have to pick up the slack.
Ed? Michael?
No, I actually, I neglected to do it under the consent agenda, but I wanted to thank Chris Harlow for all of his years of service as Capitol Outlay, and he was also part of the original wastewater support committee. He spent a lot of hours on both of those committees. And he was always a very rational and well-rounded and factual person to talk to. So thank you, Chris Harlow.
Fully agree.
At that point, I was going to take note that Bill Stoltz returning to the planning board. I mean, he was on the planning board when I was first elected and went away for a while and came back as an associate member.
I'm just going to remind everybody that Ginny Hewitt announced that the library will be closed due to the generator installation. That's on April 8. Also want to congratulate the Monomoy Regional School District kids, the high school kids coming in to, you know, try to advise us about, again, plastics and the impacts on our society and ultimately trying to advise about how we look at plastics in our community. So I think it's really, it's really good that they're proactive and they're coming to us and trying to get us to think in a different way. And so I congratulate them on coming. Fourth in public speaking isn't easy for high school kids. Also want to just re-announce that the gas moratorium is lifted, so National Grid is back installing gas all over the place, which is great news. And that's it, thanks. Can I get a?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.